Absolutely, and just a reminder for everyone in the chamber, please turn on your microphone when you speak. First, for commissioners present, we have Chair Fletcher absent today, Vice Chair Bluth.
Here.
You know what, I missed a couple of things, I want to press the record.
Recording in progress.
Just remember that. Okay, now that we've called the meeting to order and it is accessible to the public, I can call. Chair Fletcher is absent, Vice Chair Bluth.
Here.
Commissioner Freeman.
Here.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Present.
Commissioner Dawson is also absent. Commissioner Latassa.
Here.
And Commissioner Silva.
Here.
Perfect. For staff, we have Community Development Director Kim Cole is not here yet, but she will be joining us soon. We have Associate Planner Christie Sabdo, Associate Planner Matthew Bugger, myself, according to Secretary Jennifer Cleary, and also running the meeting today in Kim's absence until she gets here is Fernanda Roveria, our Principal Planner. And for public attendance, members of the public are encouraged to join our meetings via Zoom Gov, a secure service that connects you live with no lag time. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/LidiaMonterey with a 10-second delay and Comcast Channel 25 with a 2 and 90-second delay. If you would like to provide public comment, please join the meeting using Zoom or by telephone, making sure to join in time to accommodate delays. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at icertchmonterey.org. Since the meeting has begun, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial 833-568-8864 toll-free, then enter the webinar ID 1619908039. Once again, that phone number to call is 833-568-8864, and the webinar ID for this meeting is 1619908039. If prompted for a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions for using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand function at the bottom of your screen, or to provide comments by phone, dial *9 to raise your hand, then *6 to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. Please turn off TV or computer speakers, or go to another room while connected as background noise interferes with the broadcast. Public speakers will be called upon in order of hands raised. There is a three-minute time limit for today's meeting. Please stay within that limit.
Thank you, Jennifer. So it looks like we have, is it just two items on the consent agenda? We have Cal Poly's presentation, and then the recommendation is City Council on the capital improvement program. We don't have any minutes for today.
No, the minutes will hopefully be on the next planning commission agenda.
Okay.
About public comments?
Should we do the public comments that are not on, or for the contention now?
I think.
Are we going to do the?
We can open them on the agenda. I don't have.
We usually do general, you know, public comments first.
But we have the presentation, and then we have.
Oh, that happens later.
Yeah, we have some extra consent items compared to normal, so it's, the format I think is a little bit different. But on our agenda today, the public comments come after item two. So that will be items, comments for items not on the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, they come after item three.
Item, right. So then we'll do, after that, we'll do items not on the agenda and ask for any comments that are on the.
Yes, we can, we can accept comments for the consent items. I do believe they would need to be pulled from consent if they're discussed.
Okay. Well, great. So can we move forward on the Cal Poly presentation then?
Oh, we do have somebody online, Amir.
Hello. Hi, I'm Amir Hydrasulihah, co-instructor of the course Urban Design Studio. We had the privilege to meet some of the planning commissioners a couple of months ago during our site visits. And in that meeting, we heard business owners and also your opinion about the downtown and some ideas to reimagining downtown as is. And I'm excited to present students' works to you. I'm going to share a PowerPoint, and I'm going to ask students to start their presentation. I'm going to share the screen. Do you see the screen or?
Yes, but could you enlarge it? Oh, and now, now we can't.
Okay.
There we go.
Perfect.
Good afternoon. My name is Leslie.
And I'm Andrew.
Thank you for giving us the time to share with you the work we created for our vision for downtown Monterey, which is a place to visit, a place to live, and a place to connect. We will present a brief overview, about 10 minutes, providing some background and introducing our larger concept. And then we will dive deeper into the specifics of our design and development. While we can't show you all the work that we have created, we wanted to provide a brief overview of the process that we went through in creating this vision. First, we did some background information where we dove deeper into the general plan and opportunities that the city has provided. We then looked at case studies where we looked into different programs from different cities that might be applicable to the city of Monterey. We conducted our site visit where we got firsthand experience of the city, which led us to our site assessment where we combined primary information that we collected onsite with secondary information we collected from census and GIS information. We then conducted a strengths, weakness, opportunity, and threats analysis to see where, where our, sorry, to refine our areas of study and improvement. This led us to our vision and concept, a place to live, a place to visit, a place to connect, and finally, our design development. So our project scope was the downtown area, but we also looked into the influences around the city, such as the waterfront, Henry Row, and of course, the educational institutions that are in the area, such as enabled postgraduate school and Middlebury College.
All right. And then for our site analysis, we came to a number of conclusions, strengths and weaknesses for the downtown area. First of all, the Monterey Bay Recreation Trail was identified as a great strength as it encouraged the use of active transportation modes in Monterey, and therefore had the opportunity to bring these users into downtown Monterey with increased active transportation infrastructure. Also, the EV trolley system was identified as a very recognizable part of downtown Monterey public transportation. For Alvarado Street, Alvarado Street serves as a model that can be reproduced throughout the rest of downtown Monterey. Its enclosure through its building types and street trees make it a pleasant environment for pedestrians and tourists. Also, the historical appeal of downtown Monterey, this includes the Cooper-Milleri, Larkin House, and Stevenson House, as well as the Walk of History throughout downtown Monterey. And also the educational opportunities through the various language institutes in downtown Monterey and around the downtown area provides a good demographic for visitors and residents. For our weaknesses, we discovered that the parking garages in downtown Monterey, even during the peak months, summer months, were underutilized with 50%, 5% utilization. But this also is a potential opportunity as this gives room for on-street parking to be moved to and relocated to these parking garages. Of course, one of the biggest weaknesses that we discovered was the limited water supply and the lack of water credits available for new construction and new housing in downtown Monterey. Sea level rise, part of the downtown area is obscured by the 100-year floodplain, which we'll try to address in our following presentation. And the lack of identity, there was some conflicts as to what some stakeholders imagined for the downtown area, whether it would cater to tourism or residents, and job housing imbalance and limited housing variation in the downtown area. And then, so this is our vision. The statement we created was a place to live, visit, and connect. Our vision will energize downtown Monterey by emphasizing historical sites, improving streetscapes, and expanding greenery and open spaces, aiming to foster a sense of community pride while providing unique opportunities for exploration and discovery. We aim to celebrate the area's rich coastal history, arts, and music by enhancing multimodal connections to landmarks and increasing various community-based events and festivals.
So that leads us into our unifying concept. We decided to break down the downtown into three distinct areas. These are coastal connections, arts and music, and community. And we also tried to address some of the transportation challenges faced in downtown. The coastal connection, like Andrew mentioned before, is prone to the 100-year floodplain. So in our design and development, we tried to address this by not creating too large of a development, rather temporary installments. This will create a connection between downtown and the waterfront, so the two areas don't feel as disjointed. We identified three large opportunity sites for connection that will also improve the frontage along Del Monte Street. Another major concern for this area was the Del Monte acting as a physical barrier and that traffic that runs through there. The Arts and Music District in red will honor the history and art in Monterey by bringing spaces for artists, visitors, and residents to come together and enjoy the community. Here we have four large opportunity areas, where we will create large open spaces and plazas for activity to contribute to that distinct character we are trying to build for Monterey. The Community District will provide housing and connections to the rest of the city. And here we also identify four large opportunity sites. For transportation, we wanted to focus on walkability and addressing circulation within the downtown through means of the trolley route, bike routes, road closures, and traffic.
Now for Poe, because we'll be presenting the circulation plan.
As an extension of our overall theme of connections, our circulation proposals can surround the idea of providing connections between downtown and surrounding neighborhoods, connections between destinations throughout downtown, and connections between proposed developments that you'll see in this presentation and the existing circulation infrastructure in downtown, such as the roadways and the recreation trail. In terms of, terms of our actual interventions that we propose, the first is the temporary closure of Alvarado to vehicles akin to what's being done with the farmers markets. But this will be a regular weekly closure from the end of the week. We also propose permanent pedestrianization of Bonifacio and Polk to allow to create additional axes for activity within the community. On top of that, we propose a parallel route to Del Monte to not only relieve some traffic off the major artery, which is currently threatened by the sea level rise, but also disperse vehicular traffic better throughout the neighborhood. On top of this, we propose a road diet on Pearl Street with inclusion of a contraflow bike lane and reduced lane and parking spot widths to create a bicycle and pedestrian connection between Jack's Park and Dennis the Menace Park. We also propose bike lane additions, shown here on this map in green, to not only connect the neighborhood with existing neighborhoods on the outskirts, but to also provide connections within the neighborhood and connections to the Monterey Recreation Trail along the coast. In terms of public transportation proposals, we recommend rerouting the trolley route as shown in blue here on this map to include destinations that better serve the needs of not only tourists in the community, but also locals. And on top of this, we recommend relocating the current transit center from its location, currently at Simon O Plaza, to the lawn in front of City Hall Friendly Plaza. With these, we hope to better fit the needs of the community and tourists, as well as create and establish a feeling of a walkable and pedestrian-friendly neighborhood that downtown needs to be to help support these developments.
Okay. Hello, I'm Margot, and I'm going to be introducing the Community District. So this district focuses on a place to live. The main design ideas were increasing housing and community connection. And I'm just going to be doing an overview of some of the design ideas from our four opportunity sites that we identified. So number one, the first design idea is converting Polk Street to be strictly pedestrian accessible. And the second, number two, is increasing the accessibility and the connection to the creek that runs through Hartnell Gulch. And the third design idea is implementing a multi-use flexible parking structure with an adjacent plaza, connection to the Cooper-Milleri Gardens, and a rooftop garden element. The fourth design idea is redesigning the transit plaza to be a public square that is better well-connected to the surrounding uses and downtown in general. The fifth design idea is implementing a mid-density residential complex, which incorporates the existing Stevenson House and a new plaza that capitalizes on the existing historic building. And the sixth design idea is to create a new hotel, which will serve as a landmark and a gateway to downtown. And the seventh design idea is implementing apartments and townhomes that have a central community green space and plaza within them. And then the last design idea is the partial conversion of existing surface parking to accessible green spaces for the community. And then I hope you enjoy the visuals that we've added to these. Just to restate, the Community District focuses on really increasing the quality of Monterey as a place to live for its residents by adding in these connected community areas and housing. And next, we're going to be focusing on opportunity site I, and I'm going to have Will delve more into that.
Hello, my name is Will. So as Margaret said, this area, area I, which we decided to call Stevenson Plaza off of the Stevenson House historic building, which you can see towards the top left of the red circle right there. This includes four buildings, three of which are mixed-use buildings, which you can see with the red pinkish color on the bottom. And then one apartment building. So the three mixed-use buildings will include 87 units with a FAR 2.5, 2.43, and 2.1, going from building two, three, and four. And then the apartment building will be 60 units with a FAR 2.86. Moving to the transit, currently the public transit center, we're proposing of transforming this into a better connection from Alvarado Street from the left side over to the Stevenson Plaza and the surrounding area. Currently, right now, it seems pretty underutilized in opening that area up and creating that more of like a place to be able to walk through to the surrounding areas. It seemed like a very good thing to do. Overall, our goal was to increase housing and walkability to prioritize downtown Monterey. Thank you.
Next, we're going to be taking a look at, at the overall scheme, which is currently what is known as the Alvarado District. We're going to be making it more of a place to visit with the music and arts district theme as its main idea. Within that, the design ideas we started to focus on was, first and foremost, we're going to have a couple residential complexes seen in where one and two are in that top-left part, as well as in the bottom-right of that image. Secondly, we're going to be working with mixed-use development with a public plaza as the gateway for downtown. That part is going to be closer to the Alvarado Walking Mall in the top part down of Alvarado Street. For the third design idea, we're going to be having a high-density mixed-use development as an anchor for Bonifacio. That's going to be right on the corner there of Bonifacio and Alvarado, where they have that cross street going on. Right in the middle is where six is, if you can see that. That's going to be, it's going to be continuing with a mixed-use commercial on the first floor with some residential work-liv spaces on top, as well as a semi-public plaza there that connects, hopefully will draw traffic down off of Alvarado onto Bonifacio and make that walking mall even more walkable. We're going to be, for four, we're going to be utilizing a semi-covered marketplace. It's going to be similar to ones that have been utilized in Europe where there's rotating stalls and good open walking mall space that connects to that thing that I was talking about for six. Five is the, just the general pedestrianization of Bonifacio that was previously touched upon with the Transportation Group. That's going to be fully pedestrianized, as mentioned, whereas Alvarado is only going to be on the weekends. And so we're going to be really focusing our commercial vision on to Bonifacio in order to take use of that. For six is that mixed-use development that I was talking about before. It's got that plaza space there that's hopefully going to be utilized to offer music spaces for performance, for, excuse me, for performances. For seven there, we're going to be offering another small plaza down the way of Bonifacio's, so that as you're walking, you have another place to interact with, with that art wall that you can see there. And seven, as well as extending into the space in order to draw people through there. Eight is going to be connected with that. There's the two parking structures, as previously mentioned, that we believe were underutilized. And so we're hoping to connect our, directly from Bonifacio to those parking structures with a rooftop parking structure on this building that'll allow people to have an easier time coming into the space that we're designing. And then lastly, we're going to have more medium-density residential in the eastern side by Jack's Park in order to better transition to that single family that's going on there. Next, Thomas is going to talk about a specific part of our site.
Hi, everyone. So as part of the place to visit that we had mentioned previously in the presentation, we wanted to focus on the experience of the tourists more so than housing and visibility. So we're, for this small area of the whole place to visit district, we're proposing four big buildings that really center around Bonifacio Place. We recognize the existing parking structure where building one is as an anchor point for the Bonifacio Place. So instead of parking structure, we propose putting in a five-story mixed-use building. The first two floors being commercial uses for music and art studios, as well as just general commercial space. And then on the third floor, we proposed parking, which is a little unconventional, but because of the elevation difference between Pacific Street and Cali Principale, there's only one floor of rise for cars to have to travel or go up to access parking structure or the parking lot. And then the two floors of residential on top would be serviced directly by that parking structure and would be for just residents in the area who want to live close to downtown. And then the other buildings, two, three, and four, are all part of one, we propose all being part of one sort of district. And that district is just to serve Bonifacio directly. So you can see the sort of covering that we proposed. That's inspired by market halls and like open-air markets that you might see in other places in Europe, such as London. It's open-air, it has market stalls in the inside, and makes it feel as though you are. and makes it feel as though you are inside and outside at the same time. This connects directly to Bonifacio to emphasize the tourist tourism, like walkability through the area. And then has commercial on the ground floor for the same uses as the other building, as music and art studios and just general commercial. Above buildings three and four, we thought of putting in just general like meeting rooms and spaces for, maybe for the, or for the business owners who are using those buildings. And then additional residential on top of building two. And in total, we're proposing fifty-six units of residential in this area. And the density per units or density per, density units per acre comes out to about thirty-two.
Hi, I'm Jake Jansen. Let's talk about a place to connect. We all know the Bay is one of the most valuable resources in Monterey. And we had a lot of discussion in class how the waterfront is actually quite disconnected from the downtown core. And we'd like to try to enhance that by reimagining Del Monte as a parkway with landscape spaces on both sides. Now, this starts with extending the recreation trail into downtown through this plaza here and turning Tyler Street into a gateway by installing public arts and parking. Using those parking structures is more of a friendly area instead of a just place to go and park. And as you can see, what was previously a lot of parking there on the waterfront side, we turned into an active space that could be used by vendors and also for various activities and events like those similar to the Renaissance Festival and so on. And on the adjacent side of the street here, we can see that we wanted to extend that landscaping, minimize developments, because we are in the hundred-year floodplain here. And for that reason, utilize shipping containers as light structures for commercial use that can be moved around. And lots of drought-tolerant landscape in this area. And as you can see, there's some beautiful perspectives here to get a better idea. Here's a section cut of that area. As you can see, there's a really beautiful balance of event space, landscaping, parking. And now, on behalf of our department, I want to express our gratitude to Wallace Gordon for introducing us to this project and providing financial, logistical, and intellectual support throughout the process. We also want to extend our deep appreciation to Monterey's Community Development Director Kimberly Cole and her staff, Ursula Good Kelly, Fernanda Rivera, Kristy Sabato, Christopher Schmidt for their support. Thank you so much.
Yeah, and we look forward to hear your comments, questions, so students can answer.
Oh, that was fantastic, if not overwhelming. There's a lot of detail there that I think we have to figure out a way of getting back with you on so we can make the best of all the work that you guys did. But when we start up by opening up two questions, does anybody have any questions or comments they'd like to make right now?
Chair Blue, I share your enthusiasm for this project. I think this is a great way for students to learn about the realities of urban planning design. You guys did just a fantastic job, and I wish that we had professional urban designers as good as you. It is a bit overwhelming. It's going to take some time to absorb it all. But just a few quick mental comments that I made while watching this. I think that transforming friendly plaza into a transit hub is probably a poor idea. That's sort of a sacred cowl to an historic site. It's used every summer for Fourth of July events and so forth. I probably wouldn't recommend doing that. I would like to see more of an emphasis on adaptive reuse as opposed to demolition and reconstruction. I think that's more environmentally sound. But overall, I think this is a terrific way of reimagining downtown Monterey. I applaud the efforts.
Mike?
I would like to thank the students and staff for this visionary presentation. One of the things that we're trying to do is look at this community as how we're going to move into the future. I think you've given us a good vision that we could start with. And I hope that this becomes kind of a earmarked project that we can refer to time to time to keep that vision in place. I also suggest that this is a nice opportunity to thank the students for bringing practical and visionary ideas to the city of Monterey. I think it would be good for a presentation to city council as well as just this commission. Maybe even A R C, I mean, you have the opportunities, some of the other commissions, and to see at least one vision of what Monterey could become. I like some of the ideas that they have moved here into where we can go. Some suggestions of what we need to change. But overall, I just want to thank the city of Monterey for making this available to both Cal Poly and to the city of Monterey. Thank you.
Terry?
Yeah, I agree. What a great amount of work. I'm very impressed. It's, there is so much information and specific design ideas. I'd love to spend some more time on it. So it's just the first introduction I've had this afternoon. So, you know, great work. It's a really good start. It's funny, I was on the A R C and the Planning Commission for quite a while now, and we've seen various ideas for a lot of these issues. And for instance, the Transit Center has always been an awkward sort of a gateway to Alvarado Street, and it's never been adequate. It's just in the wrong place. It's such an underutilized possible public space. I do agree with Peter, probably friendly plaza might not be the best place to relocate it, but you certainly have identified a sore spot in the city. Also, the parking garages have always been, you know, they're so expensive to build and but they are underutilized. And you've, I think you've done a great job of really identifying the issues here. And not to be critical, because I think the graphics are spectacular and, you know, it's really, it's, I know how much work is involved in preparing graphics like this. But like the Bonifacio design with the four buildings, it really would have benefited from that sort of aerial shot of that, the parking garage and those other buildings from a maybe a side-by-side picture or some sort of other photograph from a similar angle of what's there now. That would allow people to visualize, oh, okay, there's the parking garage and here the, there's the mega America building or whatever. It just would have benefited a little bit. Also, I think the the, the design ideas for Del Monte area are great. That's going to be so impacted by sea level rise. It really would have been helpful on those graphics to have seen what, to have some graphic representation of expected sea level impacts on that area. That's a little bit trickier, but I think there could have been a graphic way of addressing that. But overall, I don't mean to nitpick. You did a great job, and I'm very impressed.
Sandra?
I echo all of those comments, and I wanted to get into something kind of specific. First of all, if you go to the city council, it might be a good idea to provide either a print copy where you can see the names of the streets. They're a little blurry on the PowerPoint. So, for example, the easiest graphic to relate to is the one where you have the open marketplace going between Alvarado and Cali Principale off of Bonifacio Place. That was easy to understand. But the little streets are a little, even for people who are totally familiar with the downtown, it was a little hard to see. So you might consider that if you go to city council. One of the things I loved about your presentation, we live in a city that has a north-south street axis. Cali Principale, Alvarado, Tyler, Washington, Pacific. And the businesses all have an east-west axis. But what you did was to take the building on Bonifacio Place and give it a north-south axis where you have this sort of tunnel or covered area where you're going into a building that is housing something that I think Alvarado Street really needs, which is an open marketplace with stalls for vendors that might be closed on Tuesday afternoon. But I mean, it's a real need, and that plaza, the Bonifacio Place, is a huge need for improvement. But the imagination it took to turn that into a north-south building instead of the east-west orientation, I thought was just super spectacular.
Well, thank you very much, Amir. I mean, that was your students, and you have done just an amazing job at trying to come up with some new ideas to help revitalize areas of downtown that I think we really need to get into. And hopefully, we can work with Kim. I'm not sure you're able to come back up again as we did with that initial meeting. But we need to come up with some ideas for how we can get a better understanding of more of the details and the thoughts behind your ideas that you presented, and then start working them into some of the ideas like that Peter had mentioned and the rest of the committee and city council. I think we need to really make the best of the work that you've done. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time. And just a quick point that, yes, it's, we tried to compress the design ideas within the thirty minutes, but we have more detailed documents coming up with with more clear narratives and maps and images that hopefully address some of the questions. But we totally appreciate the time and all the feedback we received. And hopefully, that's not the end of the connection between Cal Poly and Monterey, and we continue this work in coming months and years.
Yeah, hopefully, it's just a good starting point.
So Chair Blue, you do have to open it up for public comment because it is an agenda item.
Yes. And can we now open them up for public comment? Any comments on issues on the agenda?
We do have a hand raised, but just a reminder, in case somebody has wants to comment and still hasn't joined Zoom, you can join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone using the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at isearchmonterey.org. The telephone to join this meeting is eight-three-three-five-six-eight-eight-eight-six-four. The webinar ID is one-six-one-nine-nine-zero-eight-zero-three-nine. Once you're in the Zoom meeting, to provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise-your-hand function at the bottom of your screen. And to provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon.
And these public comments should be limited to the Cal Poly presentation. Thank you.
And there is a phone number. The last three digits are seven-zero-five. Using the wrong screen here. You should have the ability to unmute yourself and speak with the commission. Last phone number.
Hello?
Hi.
Yes, I have a comment. I would like to, I'd like, I have a question. That plaza where the buses are, there's that magnificent tree. Is that going to be cut down? And in this project, I would like to see Alvarado closed to traffic and just opened up to people being able to picnic there and shop. I think that is a much better idea than a mall, from my understanding. I don't quite know. But I want to make sure that trees are not sacrificed because that's what happens. And then they say we're going to mitigate, and they're going to plant some little sapling that can not possibly possibly a thing like the magnificent tree that is already there. So I would like to see more of that in this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments, Jennifer? Anybody online?
Yes, I do see more hands raised. Thank you for your comment.
Why don't we?
Mr. Chairman, did we actually open it up for public comment? Not on the agenda?
No, we haven't done that yet. No, we've only opened it up for a comment on Cal Poly's presentation.
Yes, today, items not on the agenda can be open for comment after the consent agenda. It is a little bit of an interesting format today. And we do have another commenter raising their hand on Zoom, the last three digits, eight-three-seven. You should be able to speak now after you unmute.
Please. Hello? Hi, can you? Hi, my name is Brian. Brian Rosen. Do you hear me well?
Yes.
Great. I used to live in Monterey. I love Monterey. I used to go all over the place in my bicycle and the buses. I always loved the location of the Monterey Transit Plaza. And someone who used the buses, it was a great location for transferring from the local buses from Carmel to the Amtrak buses, to the buses from Salinas. I don't think that, I mean, as a user of transit, I think that's a big mistake. And it certainly has gone a lot better than it used to be because the bus drivers used to smoke right next to the doors. But I am too concerned about the trees coming down. I think that is, if there's a big tree, that big beautiful tree that comes down, that would be a great tragedy, and the trees are sacred. They're so important. We're undervaluing them. They're living creatures. Many of them have been around a lot longer than we have. Who do we think we are, human beings? We're the ones doing more harm than anybody. So I do hope the tree will stay there. I love the old Monterey, and I hope that you don't just keep accommodating more and more tourists and more and more development because last time I went, the traffic was absolutely intolerable. It does make me not want to go back. I drove all the way from Santa Barbara and went down sixty-eight, and it was a nightmare. There's no train or mass transit or anything. So accommodating, continually building more for residential or for tourism and hotels without, with increasing the traffic is only going to destroy the quality of life of Monterey even more. So that's my comment on this, and thank you very much.
Thanks for your comment. Any questions, Jennifer?
You're welcome.
There are no more hands raised online. Does anyone in the chambers want to present a comment live? Does not look like.
Kim? Oh, go ahead.
Please step to the podium and share your name for the record.
First name Ash, last name Shukri. I'm a fellow Cal Poly graduate, so I understand where they're coming from and grew up here in Monterey and understand the congestion from the second caller. Some of the questions that I have, and I don't really want to get into what they are seeing, what they're trying to produce. I think they have a really good vision. Coming from San Luis Obispo, I've always cherished San Luis Obispo's vision. They had a way of connecting the university students with the downtown. There was a nice synergy there. When I moved back to Monterey, started my professional career, I noticed that there was, we didn't have that synergy that we had back in San Luis Obispo. Obviously, we had fifty thousand people during the school year and twenty-five thousand during the winter where it's different here. We've got this influx of Silicon Valley and San Francisco coming in to enjoy our environment during the summer. So we have this huge congestion. We have a business, obviously, on Lighthouse, which we're going to talk about later. The parking structures, the traffic that runs down through Alvarado, and of course, the transit bus system. I think if we start, or the students start with the transit system, because that does create a lot of congestion with the large buses coming through, creates a lot of traffic. I think moving it up here, what they discussed, might be a problem as well, like Peter mentioned. I think finding a solution for that first might help open up some channels and corridors for people to kind of funnel in and out of the city. But I'd also want to know what the plans are for Lighthouse coming out of Monterey, going towards Pacific Grove, and how that traffic's going to adjust. And are we going to see an influx of traffic on Lighthouse going towards Pacific Grove? Or is that going to, what are some of the plans and ideas for that? And that's something I'm sure that they'll, they'll talk about. Thank you.
Thank you.
After the close of public comment, I just want to clarify for the public, Ms. Moffett and Mr. Rosen. After the close of public comment, I just want to clarify for the public, Ms. Moffett and Mr. Rosen. These are not public works projects currently being considered by the city Monterey or proposed by our Public Works Division. This was an opportunity for the Planning Office to work with the students at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo on a learning opportunity for both of us. And I thank them for all their work and ideas. And who knows, maybe in the future, as we hopefully continue to work together, maybe one of these ideas moves forward. But I did want to clarify, there is no proposal at this time to remove a tree in the MST Plaza, nor is there any current city proposal to move the bus station.
Thanks, Kim. Any other questions on the consent agenda? Do we want to move on to the, any comments on the capital improvement program, which is on the consent agenda? Do you know?
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and introduce that item. Item three on our agenda for the consent calendar is to recommend to the city council that the capital improvement project list for the 2324 fiscal year is consistent with the city's general plans and various planning documents that are listed there. And it supersedes Planning Commission Resolution 23015 and includes the local road safety plan. And so that's on your consent agenda this afternoon.
So do you move to approve individually the two items on the consent agenda?
I think it's only this one.
It's just that one this afternoon.
Presentation was the other and we don't have any minutes. Sorry.
Yeah, we do need to accept, see if anyone from the commission wants to pull that or if any member of the public wants to comment.
Is there anybody, Jennifer, online that wants to comment on the remaining consent agenda?
I do see one hand raised. Last three-digit seven-zero-five, you should be able to unmute. Please date your name for the record.
Yes, the capital improvement program, is that including the sediment removal projects in the next few years?
I'm looking at our, I'll ask our city engineer to answer that question.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Tom Hardy, the acting city engineer. And no, that project is not included in this capital improvement program. That project is already out to bid, scheduled to be constructed this summer. So it's not included in the current capital plan moving forward.
The reason I ask that is I did look at that and it seems like this is an ongoing project that go on into the future. And I noticed that Salinas River was scheduled for some kind of sediment removal in the future and that herbicides were going to be used and sort of an overkill of removing these, these projects, you know, with enormous land movers and removing willows that actually help keep the ground intact, things like that. So I'm very concerned about that. And I, it's my understanding that those projects are in line in the future.
Thanks for your question. Thanks, Tom, for helping answer that. Should we just move to do a vote on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I do have one comment on the CIP item. I don't think we have to pull it, but it might be a typo. On the resolution, it refers to June 23, 2023. The Planning Commission recommends, it's right in the top of the resolution, refers to June 23. Is that a typo or, I mean, because that's obviously not today. So what is that, June the 23rd? Very top of the resolution.
Tell you what, we will correct the date, I promise. We will find the resolution date and you're right, that is an error considering today's June 13th.
Yeah, it appears other places.
It may, it may need to be May 23rd. We'll go back and fix that date.
I did review the whole thing. I have no problem with the item. It's just, I think that's a typo.
You are right.
Yes.
And I noted a one little particular point. In some points, it talks about the Planning Commission or the city council. But then there is one sentence in the middle that that omits the Planning Commission in that process. It just says city council may, if you can review that as well.
Thanks, Mike. Any other comments?
Other than typos, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Outstanding. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Jennifer, do you do a roll call vote?
Yes. Chair Fletcher is absent. Chair Bluth?
Yes.
Chair Freeman? I mean, sorry, Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson is also absent. Commissioner Latessa?
Yes.
Commissioner Silva?
Yes.
Thank you. This motion carries and it is not, I think it's already going to the council, so. No appealing this one.
Thanks, Jennifer. So should we move on to questions that are not on the consent agenda that anybody might have? Is there anybody online or anyone in the public that has an item that's not on the consent agenda?
For clarification, we're asking for general public comment on items not on the agenda.
There is a hand raised. Oh, there's two hands raised. The one that went up first is last three digits, seven oh five, you should still have permission to speak. Star six to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, I wanted to know if I can ask a question. Is that possible?
Kim?
Pardon?
We may not be able.
You could ask the question, but we can't reply back.
I see. Okay. Well, I'd like to say that in March 1st, the ARC Committee, the ARC Committee was reviewing the Ryan Ranch parking permit. And at that time, I was talking about how important the trees were, the 318 trees that were coming down. And they literally sort of said, well, this changes everything. And they started going in the direction of denying that, that parking lot. And then Kim Cole came in and she said, you can't change that because it's under a vested map. And that means that it's set in stone. Well, I contacted my lawyer and I had, he was a real estate lawyer. He looked it over the vested map language and he said, indeed, you can change it because if it's endangering the safety of the public or their health, then that's an issue under state law. And so I have asked, I've written to the Planning Commission and I've also written and asked, you know, the ARC Committee to revisit that. And under the situation that they were not given the proper information to make a good, you know, judgment on the vote, that we revisit that issue. And if we don't do these kinds of things, if we allow this kind of, you know, misinformation and then permitting terrible, appallingly damaging projects like this where trees, 300 trees have to come down and an enormous amount of traffic added daily, you know, to that area. We're still better than what Trump is going through, you know? It's just total corruption and it's got to stop. And so I'd like this to be revisited with the ARC Committee where they can make a really good, honest assessment and perhaps protect our area and its resources. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Jennifer, there was another hand up?
Yes, there was. Last three digits, eight-three-seven, you should be able to speak after you unmute.
Hello, this is Brian Rosen again, former resident of the Monterey Peninsula. I am very concerned about the trees that would come down for the Ryan Ranch parking accommodation. And when I, the traffic is absolutely intolerable. And, you know, I live in Santa Barbara, there's no place to take down a bunch of trees. So when our hospital made a parking lot, they made it about six stories. And the cities, they have to do it, but when land is cheaper, obviously, it's a lot cheaper just to tear down a bunch of trees. So let's pretend that those trees are, you know, are not there and that we just have to either build up or build down and we accommodate them without the massive destruction of these. Nature is very sacred and it's very healing and we're losing our trees. We're losing our big, mature, beautiful sacred trees that have been around for hundreds of years. And it's just so wrong and it's not a healing thing. And we can, you know, it's more powerful than drugs and spiritual and nature, mother nature is very powerful. And so I don't think that children are getting more and more problems. They're eating more, you know, more and more, living in a concrete jungle and getting stuck in traffic jams and opening up more outpatient clinics with the vast amount of traffic and the stress it causes trying to get there. And it's just not good at all to put more development there. If anything, development should be maybe close to the freeway or something. People are coming for Salinas, but not when you're going to cause all that massive congestion on Highway 68. Truly, there needs to be, the train needs to come into Monterey. It's, I was working on that some years ago, but now it's much, much, much worse with incentives to take the train to come into Monterey. And that would be very charming for the area. But please protect these magnificent trees and don't have them cut down for parking lot. They can build, if they have to have underground parking lot to build up, build down, but leave the trees alone. I mean, it's, we need a moratorium on tree cutting and not to, not just replace them with a bunch of little trees that can take 150 years to have the stature that the magnificent, everywhere trees seem to be coming down, the Ryan Ranch. They want to tear them down for silt control on Iris Canyon and trees actually hold in the silt. And guess what? This was a really weird year. We don't know how the future years are going to be. And it survived all these years, Iris Canyon. And to take out all those trees, well, that seems a little premature. Hardly anybody even uses that road and now it's closed off. So why don't you just turn it into a little park, you know, or maybe for bicyclists, you know? It's sacred, sacred, beautiful, big trees. Let's not, let's not be so unwise to do all this unnecessary environmental destruction. Please protect the trees in Monterey and the Fisherman's Wharf, last but not least. I just went there to visit and the beautiful, magnificent, ancient bicyclist trees have been taken out to make a few more parking spaces. It's such a nightmare. So much charm has been removed. Now it's like a big San Jose parking lot. So please give the trees a voice and a hearing and come up with alternatives. We can't just keep accommodating more and more automobiles. Bring in public transit. And unless we want Monterey to keep growing and growing and growing in congestion as well, I don't think that would make it a very desirable place. So thank you very much for my comment and I do hope you'll address bringing the train in and some real strong action there. And thank you very much. Okay, bye now.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. It's appreciated.
You're welcome.
Anybody else, Jennifer? Okay, why don't we close comment and move on to the consent agenda items? The first item is consider appeal of 611 Lighthouse Avenue AP 23000110, appealing the Architectural Review Committee Approval Resolution A23-016 of SI 230051 to approve two rotating projecting signs, flags and two wall signs. Appeal Christine Carr, property owner, Anna C. Vienna. Do we have a staff presentation?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
I will share my screen. Good afternoon. My name is Matthew Bogert. I'm an associate planner with the City of Monterey's Planning Division. And today we're here to talk about an appeal at 611 Lighthouse Avenue. And it is specifically an appeal of a ARC approval of sign permit application for projecting and wall signage. The recommendation from city staff is that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to deny the appeal of ARC Resolution of Approval for that sign permit application with conditions of approval. The site itself is zoned commercial by the general plan. It's within the Lighthouse Pacific Plan area. It's zoning as PCLH. Some background on the project. Building renovations were completed for the site in 2022. The Bulldog Pub expanded into two adjacent tenant spaces and they installed both wall signs and flags outside the front of the building. The city received complaints about the flag, specifically their height from the sidewalk. The applicant then submitted an application for a sign permit where they wanted to install four wall signs and six flags. The flags are considered rotating projecting signs because they would be turned over for other sports teams and whatnot, depending on what game was playing within the pub. For some context of the site, this is what the building looked like in 2019 prior to the renovations that were completed in 2022. This is as the pub stands roughly today. You can see that the Bulldog Pub pushed into both the coffee shop and the laundry. And they painted the outside with the flags out front. You can see the little flag holders on the previous slide. The purpose of the sign ordinance is to protect and enhance against visual blight, prevent proliferation of signs and encourage effective use of signs, provide equality and equity among sign owners and also to mitigate any potential detrimental impact of having numerous signs in close proximity of each other. The objectives of the sign ordinance are to allow a a business to identify itself from the street frontage. And if there's any additional signage, it should be subject to additional scrutiny, which is where sign permit applications start to go to architectural review. These signs are supposed to integrate to the building design and the signs should reflect the corresponding building more so than the numerical standards of the ordinance. So ARC is allowed to open it up beyond. And the sign ordinance also tries to convey cohesive streetscape so that signs complement each other and nearby signage. The findings of approval that ARC needed to make, the first one is that the proposal needed to achieve those purposes and objectives. The ARC found that the signage was similar to other city pub establishments in the city, such as the Salty Dog Pub and Crown and Anchor. And however, also noted that conditions that are put on the project would reduce the proliferation number and square footage of the signage that was proposed underneath the application. The second finding for approval they needed to make is that the signage was consistent with the guidelines or that ARC would determine that the signage would better achieve the purpose and objectives than just sticking to those quantities from the sign ordinance and citywide sign guidelines. This slide here is a little bit overwhelming, but it details the inconsistencies between the proposed application and the side, the sign guidelines themselves. One reason that it didn't fall under a number of these is that flags were considered a projecting sign and flags are not specifically called out in the sign guidelines, but we were trying to apply. but we were trying to apply the best standard that fit the situation. The amount of signage that was proposed was 162 square feet. If you count up all the signage of the six flags, in addition to the wall signs that are on the building. And I'll go into the conditions that were put on it in just a moment. The third finding for approval that ARC needed to make is that the proposal was consistent with the general plan. They found that it was consistent, substantially consistent, and that it would support the existing commercial business there at the site. For ARC approval, ARC voted four to one to approve the signage. And the two conditions that were put on it were to reduce the number of flags from six to two and the wall signs to be reduced from four to two. This was to reduce sign proliferation, total sign area, the total number of signs. I will note that ARC did not necessarily say which wall signs to remove. They left that up to the applicant. And the total amount of square footage of signs does still exceed the technically allowed amount. But ARC did exercise their right to expand above what is allowed for the site. And also to raise the flag height itself to provide clearance. Usually for hanging signs, projecting signs in the city, the bottom of the flag, the bottom of the sign needs to be at least eight feet above the city sidewalk. So raising it got it to that amount. Public comments that were received. I will note that this presentation was made a little bit earlier. We had four letters. We received five more regarding this property universally in support of the appeal. They enjoy seeing the flags, makes the public welcoming, adds to the atmosphere. The signs are not obtrusive. They add spark to the facade. The five additional letters that were received today, four of them were very similar comments of support and direct, direct support of the signage. One was also from one of the employees from the, from the pub and noted that customers talk about them. And the raising of the flags has added somewhat to safety concerns, but that people have liked switching out flags when their teams are playing. People have requested to have their teams up and they rotate them out for that. Planning Commission options include either denying the appeal, which is staff's recommendation. And this would uphold ARC's approval, which would reduce the flags from six to two, raise the flags and reduce it from, reduce the wall signs from four to two. Or Planning Commission could approve the appeal and this could either allow the signed proposal in full or modify the conditions to either increase or decrease the number of things that are allowed or the square footage. Or the item could be continued to a future meeting. With that, that concludes staff's recommendation. I know the applicant is here as well. And staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution to deny the appeal and uphold ARC approval of sign permit application with conditions of approval. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for the presentation. Any questions for you?
Just have one quick question. Drove by there this afternoon and they have taken down the low hanging signs and brought the two that were approved up so that they're higher. Was there any address of the coat of arms that's over the door? Is that a sign or is that just a flourish?
That is included in one of the four wall signs.
They would have to take that one down?
The ARC condition was to reduce the number of wall signs from four to two. Oh, and so the four that are counted in there, I may also have a backup slide on that.
This little guy right here.
Oh.
For a little bit of specificity, the pub grub sign off to the left, the Bulldog Sports Pub sign up top, the ales and stout sign to the right, and the Bulldog emblem sign in the middle are the four wall signs that were initially part of the application. And the condition is to reduce it from four to two and leaving it up to applicant's discretion as to which two.
Any other questions?
I have a question. These flags need to be replaced every evening?
There is no restriction on when or how often the flags are exchanged or turned out. It's my understanding from the applicant who can also talk to it that it may reflect whatever game they're putting on their TVs inside upcoming games. They rotate out the flags at will.
Is there anything in the specific plan regarding flags?
No.
Thank you.
Peter?
I'm curious as to what the city's definition of sign is and how this, how a flag would fall under that definition.
We can look it up for you, but it's very broad and I'll just look it up on the internet and we'll get that to you.
Mary, did you have a question?
Yeah, thanks, Matthew. I'll let you finish what you're doing there.
I'm looking it up.
Okay, so the staff report talks about the planning commission review needing to decide whether or not the ARC aired in its decision. Can you, I don't have that in front of me. Can you describe that sort of criteria that the planning commission is supposed to apply to this?
When it comes to airing, the findings that needed to be made were that the sign, it was those three findings that I walked through. There is some flexibility there. Any additional signage beyond the sign guidelines requires additional scrutiny as to the extent to which conditions are placed on a project. It is my understanding that there is flexibility for planning commission to.
So our city code has had that phrase forever. We've always struggled with it because a lot of times the board above didn't necessarily think that the underlying board necessarily made an error. But maybe new evidence came forward or a different reasoning, because this is a de novo hearing. For example, the letters that you've been able to review were not submitted at the Architectural Review Committee level. So you have new information not considered by the ARC. So we use that word lightly, error. It means just a reversal of the decision.
Okay.
And then in regards to sign, it's any visual device or representation designed or used for the purpose of communicating a message or identifying or attracting attention to a premises, product, service, person, organization, business or event with or without the use of words. And I think in terms of sign language, signs, what's important to realize, cities can only control the time, place and manner of signs. We cannot control the content. So that's just a, so the definition of sign is very broad and you can only control like the height of the sign, the number of signs, the size of the sign. But you can't control that it says burgers versus beer or anything else that you might want to.
I will also note that when it comes to state, federal flags, those are different protections than what is intended here, which is to attract customers to a business.
All right. One other question. Could they have a fin sign? Wouldn't they be allowed a fin sign in addition to these other things?
They could apply for a fin sign. However, with the current square footage that is there, since there, they would be exceeding it again. They would need to go through ARC and that's that approval process.
On the, I think it says that it was hanging down to five and a half feet. That has been resolved. I don't want to see a flag flying in people's faces as they walk by. That's my question.
I have not measured the new height of the flags.
They're high.
That may be a question better for the applicant, but the initial height was lower.
And to meet building code, I don't think anything is supposed to be over or less than eight feet from the sidewalk. So if you do end up approving whatever number of flags you approve, we will be requesting a minimum eight foot clearance to the bottom of the flag.
Eighty inches.
Perfect.
What, one other quick comment. Were these flags slash signs ever permitted by building or, or that just appear roggily?
They were installed on the building and the applicant is now going through the approval process for them.
But when these tenant improvements went through building plan check, that application did not include the flags or signs.
Not from staff reviews.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thanks, Matthew. Does the applicant like to make a presentation?
Hi, I'm Ash Shikri, one of the co-owners of the Bulldog Pub. In reference to the signs, can you flash up the signs again? We weren't really aware of the actual size of the signs and how big they were supposed to be and what we were permitted or not permitted to put up. If you notice the pub grub, the Bulldog Sports Pub, the ales and stout, we can remove one, two, three, whatever you guys feel that is necessary to remove to meet the guidelines of the Architectural Review Board or the ARB. The flags in general, they never were lower. They were always eight feet above. You can walk underneath them. They would never hit anybody that was over seven feet high in the head. Or it would, it wouldn't cause any damage or harm to anybody. It was, it was a way of getting people involved into the community to come into the pub. It is a sports pub now. People that cherish their alma maters or their favorite sports team. It was good to get them involved. We have people that come into town and they send us their flags from their alma mater. They bring them in. We have over 650 flags now. It's exciting during football season, college football, baseball, basketball, to wave your team flag. It invites customers in, which of course gets people into the, to the business, creates more cash flow, more tax dollars. It keeps our business thriving. On Lighthouse, we have a trouble with parking. We don't get a lot of people able to come in. We get, we depend on the walk-in traffic. Fortunately, because of the traffic, we get people lined up at the red light and they get to view all the beautiful flags of the teams. If we need to raise them, we would raise them. We did raise two of them to 11 feet. Now it's a safety hazard because we can't go up there every day and change the flags. We put the flags up every morning at 11. We take them down at nine o'clock. We've got beautiful colors and beautiful teams. We just don't see it to be a problem or an issue. Now it's a problem and an issue because we're allowed two flags. They're 11 feet high and the same two flags that we put up a month ago that we were allowed to are still there because we can't seem to get up there to take them down. So we have the Georgia Bulldog flag and another Georgia Bulldog flag. Because those are the only two flags that we can get a bulldog on and they're still up there. So in fairness to our community and all the other stores that are there, there's seven other businesses that have flags on that street. And believe it or not, they're all lower than eight feet. But we're used as a, I guess, an example, since we put up a new building, we repainted it. It's 10 times better than when it used to look like. If you flash the old building, you can see the signage. That's what it used to look like and today it looks like this. I just don't see the problem or the issues. But again, we're trying to get customers. We're trying to entice business, which is good for the economy. It's good for the city. And we're just trying to figure out a way that's fair for both sides. I haven't heard any complaints other than an internal complaint and that's where the application process started. So I'm really not sure where to start and how to end this, other than we'd like to come to a resolution and we're counting on your support to figure out the best way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't we open it up for public comment, Jennifer? Could you remind people how to get in touch?
To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at iSearchMonterey.org. To join by telephone, dial 833-568-8864, then enter the webinar ID 1619908039. To provide comments via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. I see no hands raised on Zoom. And I do, oh, there is a public comment in the chamber. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, Bob Paulus. Welcome. It's good to see you all. I'm a Monterey resident. And I really enjoyed seeing what the pub has done and the way it's remodeled. It really becomes a social meeting point for the community. The flags are a big thing. I'm almost saddened to hear we would go down from four to two flags. Because I do something that I enjoy, seeing the change of flags, seeing the different ones. I'm sad to hear it's up too high, so they can't change them. I hope they find a way to resolve that. But I think it's all part of that character. I certainly like the coat of arms in there. I'd hate to lose that. I know sometimes that's more not as important maybe as a sign that we got beer, but we've got to balance this out. I don't even find the way the signs are there now, they're anything really detrimental to the community. It really is something that sort of grabs attention. I know I wanted to go in the place. It's vibrant, that's attracting people and other people are there and they're rooting for their team. And the pub's done that. So it's been a good addition. I just hope you'd be really fair with this and don't feel like it's a real nuisance to our eyesore of a community here that is so bad. I just like what I have up there right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else. Should we move on to discussion?
I have a question for the applicant. Can you ask him to come forward?
Could you come back, please?
So sorry that, so the four signs that are there, did you make a comment that you, the, the number of those signs is not important to you or?
It's, I mean, really what's, the value to us is people know it's a sports pub. If we can have one sign that says it's sports pub, the grub hub that we put up there is to kind of join it together as a sports park. Can you, Devin? You're referring to?
Yeah, there are four signs.
The four stationary signs.
But I, I thought I heard you say that that's, are the flags more important?
The flags are very important. Ales and stout, you know, it's sport, and it's an English pub. I think most of the people knows that, that we do serve ales and stout. I'd like to keep all the signage. I don't see them to be any cumbersome or troublesome whatsoever or visually unstimulating.
But the appeal that was filed is about those wall signs and the flags. He would prefer going back to the four.
The six flags that we had up were, are nice to have, as you heard from the last comments. That people express their teams or alma maters. It's just a fun way to bring in and drive in more business.
Right. And the wall signs, you would prefer having all four of them approved, the ARC only approved.
I would like to, yeah, I'd like to have all four approved. I just don't see them, you know, if they have, if something has to come down, let us know what you want to come down. And maybe we can get together and, and put a different sign up to, to attract people or let people know who we are.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Yeah, you bet.
Peter, you want to ask a question of the applicant or?
I actually wanted to follow up with a comment Kim made regarding.
Sure. Why don't we just move to, back to the commission? We'll do comments.
Well, this is following up with the definition of sign that Kim read out. And I've just had a follow-up that I just thought of.
Sure.
And it would be useful if we can go back to the slide that showed the previous awning right here. Now, I remember when I was on the ARC 100 years ago, we approved this. And my recollection was that the area of the signage on these awnings was only the square footage of the letters and not the entire structure of the awning. And so with that said, I'm a little, I guess, confused over how, how the sign definition would be applicable for both this and a flag. Because what we have here, if you take in consideration the entire awning, that could be a device that would fall into the definition of signage as opposed to just the letters. And I just wanted to get clarification on that.
So historically, you're right, how we've calculated signage on awnings is we would take the square footage of the signage on the awning itself. Some awnings are very large, some are very small. We would just count the letters. For the flags, I don't know if you want to pull up the graphic of the flag. I mean, so you've got the big logos, you've got different shapes and sizes. The best we could come up with was to do the square footage of the flag. And if we're actually supposed to calculate Lloyd versus printed area, I think that's really challenging as those. So if you're inclined to prove the flags, you think they're the right visual element for the building, then I would just do that. I wouldn't necessarily try to, to make a finding that, I don't know, is that a Clippers flag? The blue and the yellow one, I think, and the logo with the yellow. I wouldn't necessarily try to, to make a finding that, I don't know, is that a Clippers flag, the blue and the yellow one, I think, and the logo with the yellow? Warriors, thank you, whatever. And so would, you know, to actually count the negative space in the blue around it seems really difficult. So I would rather not go down that path. And I guess I need to know sports teams better.
As long as we're sort of, before we get into public comment, I would like to ask staff also, so the is the safety issue, the eight-foot thing is off the sidewalk to the bottom of the actual fabric of the flag, but it's not where it's mounted. It's how far head down it hangs.
Yeah, so if it hits somebody
Yeah, some teenager could, you know, grab it or whatever. It's, yeah. Okay, thanks.
Jennifer, anybody online?
I do believe we already opened the comment and there was nobody who wanted to speak.
Yeah, I thought we brought back. Any other commissioner comments?
Comment.
Or questions?
No question.
Okay. Sure, come on back.
Just as a reference to what Kim was saying and then what Peter was adding in terms of the flags. They're removed and put back. Does it make a difference in terms of something that's permanent on the wall or interchangeable? We change these flags every day. It's just customary. We change it at 11 o'clock and we take it down at nine. I think it's fair to say that if we raised it a few more feet where it wasn't a safety hazard to get up there and take them down to where it was eight feet above where someone wouldn't get hit in the eye or someone that was walking by. There's seven other businesses on the street that have flags that are lower than that. I don't want to affect their business whatsoever. But there has to be some consistent terminology here on what is right, what's consistent with the city on Lighthouse, with our building code and what we're doing. So we know in the future what we can and can't do. I'd like to see the six flags go up. If you would like us to reduce the amount of permanent signage, we'd like to do that as well if it's, if it's something that we need to do. But it's real important for our business model in establishing clientele that we have on a consistent basis, especially moving into football season, what really en heightens and enlightens our business model. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks. Do we need to open it back up to public comment now? Yeah, can we please? Is there anybody raising their hand online?
I see no hands raised online or in the chambers.
Anybody else in the audience, their comment? Okay, bring it back. Any more comments from the commission members?
I'll start, I guess. So it's funny, it's all a storm in a teacup, isn't it? But it's, on the other hand, it's super important to the owner, you know, it's first of all, I want to say they've done a beautiful job on this project. They're really, the remodel and the transformation of the bulldog is really to be commended. I hate to go through this sort of it seems so almost punitive sometimes, this whole sign thing. But the reality in the city is that it does become a clutter. If everybody, you know, if everybody wants to make their business look like an embassy and there are all these flags, it gets ridiculous. So that's why we have an ordinance to try to keep it from getting you know, cluttered. So, and it's always the problem is if, like you're letting all these other people do it, well, it isn't that the city is necessarily allowing flags. It's, you know, it's a, when applicants come forward, their sign application is processed, just like all the other signs. I don't, I can't speak for these other alleged signs on Lighthouse Avenue. But, so we have two issues. The and ARC is sort of, you know, we've been brought their approval, an appeal of their approval where they approved two flags and two signs. I, you know, I think I, I hate to be, to come down too heavy, but on the flags, I think the bottom of the flag shouldn't be higher than eight feet above the sidewalk. I think that's hazardous and a potential problem. So I do, that's, that's my own personal feeling about that. And I tend to agree with the two sign or the two flag thing. So I tend to agree with the ARC regarding the flags. This is just one commissioner's comments. Regarding the wall signs, I find that more troublesome because it's like I kind of kind of like the four signs as they are. It's like there's this symmetry with the two, I love the the sort of the coat of arms thing in the middle. So I don't know for, you know, it's hard for me to say, well, get rid of one sign. Because that would anyways. I'm interested to see what the other commissioners say about the wall signs. So I do have a firm position on the flags, the signs. I'm happy to hear other people's opinions.
Sandra. So I agree with that on the flags and also reducing the number of flags from six to two reduces the square footage of signage anyway. On Alvarado Street, they put in these nice vintage lights in the trees. And the ones that are hang down just under eight feet, the boys on their bicycles in the morning come and pull the lights down so that they're pulled out of the tree. So if you can touch a flag with your hand, I don't think you're going to see that flag for longer than two weeks with the population that we have in Monterey. My own opinion is that I really like the signs, the way you've done them. I like the way the symmetry and the coat of arms and all of that. And if you reduce the number of flags to two and you bring them up so that the bottom of the flag, when it's hanging without wind, is at eight feet. My opinion would be to leave the signs as is and leave the flags so that the bottom is not eight feet or less. Bottom of the flag is eight feet or more. Mike?
I like the flag concept. I like the fact that you're refreshing the vision of your business on a daily basis. I like the existing permanent material as well. I have similar concern to Sandy. Youth in particular have a habit of jumping up and grabbing things. As to height, eight feet to me is a very reasonable city standard. And if, I do have a concern about the employees having to climb up all the time, twice a day. And I would suggest that you consider some halyards that you do on a flagpole that can be made very easy and very safe. But that way you eliminate some of that climbing. So as an alternative, I would suggest that is a suggestion. As the rest of it, like I said, I like the idea of the flags. Particularly for this kind of business and the fact that they change out. Because if you drive down the street, you're so used to seeing the same thing. When you don't see the same thing, it picks up your eye and I appreciate that.
Peter?
Well, I was trying to find any angle to support the appellant. I failed. I do like the flags. I don't mind the six flags for the reasons that Mike just spoke about. I do think that it is a hazard at that lower level. The proliferation of the flags, however, is a problem in terms of being precedent-setting and opening up a whole can of worms with how do you enforce the signage ordinance and give special treatment to one person and not others? And that troubles me. So I'm very much inclined to go with the direction that the planning commission seems to be heading with this.
Yeah, no, I think I agree with Terry and Sandra in their initial comments. The wall signs do have a nice symmetry and I think unless we want to restrict it to just the two signs, which would be the coat of arms and then the sign below. Then I think it may actually look empty in my mind. And I agree with Mike too. I like the idea of the flags, but I'm, I think part of what ARC is trying to do is to implement a mechanism to work our sign guidance into place so it can be effective. And so I, even though I think I like the flags, I can see why that may not be something that we want to to set as a precedent. And maybe just, you know, going out with a ladder or a land year might be another way of, you know, looking at how to change them rapidly. But so having said that, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to retain the four wall signs and to limit the number of flags to two. At eight feet.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And that's eight feet to the bottom of the flag.
Correct.
I have a question. So the, is this sort of is this motion in a, 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 a holding or denying?
Well, it would be a modification of the recommendation to us because the recommendation is to reduce the number.
It's basically, it's not a denial. It's it is denying the appeal.
No, it's approving the appeal with new conditions of approval.
Okay.
Oh, that's very good.
And with, maybe we could add a note that we're not slapping down the ARC. It's, they didn't air so much. It's very much, at this point, sort of a qualitative kind of thing.
Yeah. Okay, so Peter made the motion, Sandy seconded. Can we have a roll call, please? Jennifer?
Yes. Chair Fletcher is absent. Vice Chair Luth?
I.
Chris Freeman?
Yes.
Chris Brassfield?
Yes.
Chris Dawson is also absent. Chris Latassa?
Yes.
Chris Silva?
Yes.
Thank you. This motion carries and it is appealable to the city council with forms found in the planning office within the next 10 days.
Now, we should repeat what we've approved. That.
And so for clarification, the planning commission has approved the four wall signs as shown on the original application. You've approved two flags that they have to have a minimum eight-foot walking clearance under the flag.
Great, thanks. So now we're moving on to item number five. Received the community survey report results and preliminary, oh wait, we're not
Actually tonight at seven o'clock.
We're journeying.
Right. We're coming back. All right, that's seven o'clock.
Okay.
The Planning Commission.
Recording in progress.
All right, so let's resume this meeting in the planning commission. I guess we can start with public comment. If there's any comment. Anything, Jennifer, online or?
Are these four items not on the agenda?
Yeah, not on the agenda.
I want to state for the record that all commissioners are present at this time of reconvening. And there are currently no hands raised online. But just a reminder, members of the public are encouraged to join our meetings via Zoom Gov, a secure service that connects you live with no lag time. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with a 10 second delay and Comcast Channel 25 with up to a 90 second delay. If you would like to provide public comment, please join the meeting using Zoomer by telephone, making sure to join in time to accommodate delays. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at icertchmonterey.org. Since the meeting has begun, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial 833-568-8864 toll free, then enter the webinar ID 1619908039. Once again, the phone number to call is 833-568-8864. Then enter the webinar ID 1619908039. If prompted for a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions for using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. Please turn off TV or computer speakers or go to another room while connected as background noise interferes with the broadcast. Public speakers will be called upon in order of hands raised. There is a three minute time limit for today's meeting. Please stay within that minute, that limit.
So before we go to public comment, there was a comment that all our commissioners are here. It's the same number of commissioners that were here for our afternoon session. So the commissioners that are absent for the evening session include Chair Fletcher and Commissioner Dawson. So the remaining commissioners are in attendance and is there anybody online?
Thank you for correcting that error of mine. And there are attendees online, but no hands currently are raised. And does anyone in the audience want to provide a comment for items not on the agenda? No, no, safe to move on.
Okay, let's move to the next item, item number five, receive the community survey report results in the preliminary site housing inventory and strategies for Monterey 2031 general plan update.
Thank you, Chair or Vice Chair Bluth and Commissioners. I just have a couple introductory comments and just to talk about the purpose of today's meeting. The purpose of today's meeting is not for you to provide direction. You'll notice that the agenda item is to receive the survey report results and the preliminary sites, housing inventory and key strategies. So it's an opportunity for you to ask questions. It's an opportunity for you to comment. At the city council meeting that will be happening next week, there will be another opportunity for joint conversation between the planning commission and council. And then the council will actually, there'll be a joint meeting and then there will be a separate meeting where the council actually provide direction to staff on how they want to proceed. So I just want to, you shouldn't phrase tonight, you know, I'm directing staff to do X, Y, and Z, which is what is normally the typical protocol if you're reviewing a draft ordinance or taking action on something. But that's not the purpose of tonight's meeting. It's really a precursor to next week's meeting. And but we're happy to take all your public comments or any of your concerns. And but we're happy to take all your public comments or any of your concerns or thoughts and think about those and try to be ready for the next meeting.
Thanks Kim.
With that, we'll turn it over to Andrew with Hill with Deatt Batia. And Andrew has been the primary principal and author of our Housing Element. Work products to date and he's been doing a fantastic job. So I know I'm anxious to hear his presentation today.
There we go. Thank you. Great. Well, thank you very much. And since we met you, I met with you last in February of this year. The team has done some additional analysis and extensive community outreach. That's informed a preliminary draft sites inventory and some key strategies for the updated housing element. These are really core components of the housing element. And so we wanted to give you a preview of them tonight and take on board. Some feedback and some comments with a review with a review to refining them for inclusion in a full public review draft of the housing element that'll be. Available later this summer. So in my presentation tonight, I want to provide a little bit of background to provide context for the sites inventory and key strategies. I'll start off with some, some background on the legal requirements for the housing element. I'll go over our process for site identification and recap what we heard from the community. As a result of the outreach that we've done. And then I'll go through area by area of the city and introduce the development potential as we see it, along with some key strategies to facilitate that potential. And I'll round out the presentation with a summary of the overall arena capacity of the preliminary sites inventory. And then frame some discussion questions that we'd like to hear from you on tonight and then finish up with a look at next steps. So starting off with housing element background, state law defines several. Core components of the housing element and top, top among these is an inventory of sites that are available for housing. These are typically shown on a map and also included on a, on a matrix and that matrix also shows the realistic capacity of each of those sites. For, for a number of housing units. Additionally, the housing element needs to include some background analysis that includes an assessment of local housing needs based on a review of census data. A, an assessment of constraints to housing that could include regulatory constraints, environmental constraints or market based constraints. And also an assessment of any issues that impede fair access to housing. And then finally, based on all of this, the housing element needs to include an action plan of implementing programs that facilitate development of sites on the inventory. And that address housing needs, constraints and any fair housing issues. And so the preliminary strategies or the preliminary inventory and key strategies tonight really touch on three of these four components. You know, the, the inventory, the projections and some of the implementing programs that could eventually be included in the draft. Of course, the inventory needs to demonstrate a capacity to meet Monterey's assessed share of the regional housing need. Which is for at least 3,654 units over the next eight years. Those units are broken out into different income categories. From very low, low, moderate and above moderate. In Monterey's case, about half of the total Rina allocation is for lower income households. Additionally, state law establishes several criteria for the eligibility of, of sites to meet. The city's lower income Rina requirements. And those includes size parameters. So lower income Rena sites should be generally between half an acre to 10 acres in size. They should be relatively free of environmental constraints. They should be close to transit. And they should have the availability of infrastructure and utilities either existing or planned. And the reasoning for this is because the state wants each community to identify the most shovel ready sites for, for lower income households. Additionally, overall, the inventory needs to further affirmatively further fair housing. And so that means it should avoid any over concentration of lower income sites in one area. And generally look for a variety of strategies to integrate housing throughout the community. And then, once you have the sites identified, the state has also identified criteria for projecting their realistic capacity. And guidance from the state is that. The projection of how many units is likely on any individual site should be based on an analysis of past production. Now, in Monterey's case, because housing production has been so limited by water supply issues. If we only looked at past production trends in Monterey, we would be underestimating the capacity for housing in the future when water is available. And so to come up with. More reasonable numbers for throughout this eight year cycle, assuming that water will become available. A couple of years into the cycle. We did a survey of recently built or approved projects in the city of Monterey, but also. In adjacent communities that don't face the same water constraints. So Marina, Sand City and Seaside. And on that basis, for the purpose of this preliminary inventory, we've assumed that. Downtown sites in the Alvarado District will develop at 55 dwelling units per acre on average. And then also on commercial corridors, for example, Lighthouse or North Fremont, we're assuming that. Those sites would develop at 29 dwelling units per acre. That is the realistic capacity that we've developed on the basis of this survey we conducted. But then in the Pacific Monroes Cass area, we're assuming 16 dwelling units per acre and that's linked to the, the actual density of housing projects. Product that is built in, in those neighborhoods today. Okay, so now let's talk about our process for a site identification and give you an overview of what we heard from the community in the recent survey. So. We started off by doing some analysis and mapping the results to identify potential candidate sites. And so we started by mapping the location of vacant sites. In the community, which you can see here on this map. We also mapped the location of underutilized commercial sites. And so for that, we considered sites, for example, with a low as-built floor area ratio. So if you think of maybe a, a one story structure with a large surface parking lot, a site like that could potentially be redeveloped if the owner is interested. To add housing to the site. Another indicator of underutilization is when the value of the land is worth more than the value of the buildings on it, because there would be an incentive. For the property owner to redevelop with new uses that could command higher rents or sales prices. So. We, we did some analysis and we mapped the location of those underutilized sites as well. And then when you add those two together, overlay the two, the areas where vacant and underutilized clusters. Sites cluster are the locations within Monterey that are most likely to see redevelopment over the period. However, in Monterey's case, we also need to consider environmental constraints and hazards. And so we mapped those as well, including areas. Projected to be impacted by sea level rise, areas subject to high, high and very high fire hazard severity. Liqufaction, seismic liquefaction and airport safety zones as well. And so we wanted to make sure that we're aware of those constraints and those were factored into. You know, where our, our mapping of where the development potential is highest. And so overall, as a result of that, you can see the large map on the left shows eight opportunity areas in Monterey that have the greatest potential for. To accommodate new housing. And that mapping exercise then became the basis of a community wide survey. And so between March 1st and April 30th of this year. We conducted an extensive survey, survey to collect input from community members on how and where. To accommodate new housing in order to meet the city's arena obligations. The survey was available in English and Spanish. It was available online and in paper versions. The online version had in fact, two versions, so five minutes if people only had a limited amount of time, but still wanted to contribute. We had a focused five minute survey. If people wanted to take a deeper dive into the issues and, and, and really. Immerse themselves in the material, then we had a 10 or more minute option as well. And in total, we heard from over 1,050 community members who devoted their time and shared their input on, on. Locations for housing, on types of housing, and also on their vision for these areas, how they should evolve over the next, over the next eight to 10 years.
Thank you.
On that one. Sorry, I'm a novice with this.
Hide the video. Hide the floating controls.
Sorry.
Here you go.
Thank you. That's okay. So who did we hear from in this survey? Overall, we heard from a, a good. Balance of voices in the community. We heard a, we heard a good diversity on the age spectrum. Interestingly, I think that younger people aged 25 to 44, 44 were more likely to take the quick five minute survey. And senior citizens were more likely to take the, the 10 plus minute survey, but we heard a good balance across the age spectrum. We also heard a good balance of people who work in Monterey versus people who live in Monterey. We did hear more from homeowners than from renters. The city did make diligent efforts, sending out two postcards. To, to renters and really making diligent efforts there. One thing I would say though, is that many of the, the people who work in Monterey, who took the survey may actually be renters somewhere else. We don't have a way of knowing that. So the, the balance between renters and homeowners could be better than, than is shown on this graph. We also heard from all people who live in all neighborhoods of Monterey. Some neighborhoods participated more, New Monterey, Monterey Vista, Old Town were among the strongest participants. And then there were some neighborhoods where there's an opportunity in future rounds of outreach for the project to make a targeted effort. For example, to hear from people who live in Fisherman's Flats or Deer Flats or some of those neighborhoods as well. So. An opportunity to build on, on this and target outreach in the future. Similarly, interestingly, we heard from more women than men. And so I think that's another opportunity in future rounds to make a. It indicates an op, an opportunity to go out and, and hear more from men, perhaps going, making some presentations to business groups and chambers of commerce and that kind of thing might, might. Be a thing to do in the next round. Oops.
If I may.
Yes.
On that survey, I tried three different occasions to complete it. When you started going from one neighborhood to another. I found that when you're in the secondary one, it eliminated the first one. So if you did multiple, it didn't track.
Hmm.
And that's the limiting factor that. If they do this again, it needs to be captured.
Okay, yeah, thanks. So this slide is giving an overall snapshot of, of locations and support for housing. I thought it was interesting. We looked at. We looked at. Three different indicators of support for housing in each of the areas and we ranked the areas and overall, the results. Indicate across both the five minute and the 10 minute versions and the paper versions. The strongest support for, for new housing was actually in, in Fort Ord, but also a strong support in North, North Fremont, along Garden Road and, and downtown. There was solid support in all areas, but with less enthusiasm in the Lighthouse area, Pacific Monroes, Cass and Del Monte. And now I'll go a sort of area by area and talk more about the opportunity, what we heard from the community and some potential strategies. So I'm going to start with downtown. This is, this is an area where based on the, the results from the survey, we really heard the strongest support for. Higher density housing and taller buildings. And one thing to say about downtown is that the, the relatively smaller parcel size. Does, does present challenges for, for development. There's also fragmented ownership patterns. So it isn't the case that you have many small parcels owned by the same, the same entity. It's actually multiple different entities. So that. Poses a challenge to development. Within the larger downtown area, the best opportunities are really in the Alvarado District. So centered on Alvarado and Kaip. That is where you see larger parcels. Also, this area is generally outside of, of the more impacted, the more areas of downtown that are more impacted by sea level rise. And there are some adjacent clusters of parcels under common ownership, particularly along. Along Kaip and Tyler that, that do present relatively good opportunities.
Does the red mean they're available today?
Yes, the, the red, well, available means they're either vacant or they're underutilized, either by, on the basis of FAR or, or AV ratio. And so if the owner is interested, yeah, they're, they're, they're relatively more likely to develop is what, what it means. Red is the, the highest tier. So it means the. Either it's vacant or highly underutilized and it's relatively free of environmental constraints. The yellow sites of which there are none downtown, but in some areas, the yellow sites mean they're, they're. There's an indicator of some degree of underutilization, but they're probably impacted by environmental constraints. So they're a lower tier of. Development potential. That's what.
Well, looking at the map though, some of this red is parking lot.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and the environmental constraints include historical?
So it don't include historical, but we did consider that in, in, in the case of downtown. And so. It, that the historic does present a challenge to development, rather a cost for development, you know, because. Anyone who, who owns a historic property and wanted to redevelop would need to make sure they comply with the historic standards for reuse and, and preservation. So anyway, I think the, the strongest opportunities were in the Alvarado District where the downtown specific plan already allows up to 100 dwelling units per acre. And so to facilitate build out of, of the, of the sites. What we're, what we're recommending actually is a, a couple of potential strategies. And the first would be to allow up to, buildings of up to five stories in the Alvarado District. Currently, I think four stories are allowed. So this would be a one, an additional one story to help with the development feasibility. But no changes to the, to the heights or densities in, in any other part of the downtown area. Additionally, we're proposing that the downtown specific plan and the general plan could be revised to provide a clear statement. That 100% residential uses are allowed in, in the downtown area except on. Except on, on an adjacent to Alvarado Street, consistent with the city council resolution 21 dash 12, 129 CS. And then the third strategy to facilitate development would involve using municipal shared parking agreements strategically. So offering them to developments that propose more than 30 units. And are located within a thousand feet of a city owned parking lot or garage. The city could proactively use a shared parking agreement that would allow that, that development to. Meet some of its parking requirements in a city owned lot as a way of essentially. Helping with the financial feasibility of the development.
Just to help orient the commission, the National Historic Landmark District is shown sort of bifurcated by the blue line and it's. Green with the hatch. So you can see our opportunity sites are not necessarily within our National Historic Landmark District. They're more like the Bank of America site. You see a lot of the sites that we've looked at over the years.
So not to get lost in the details here, but the, the parking garage on Del Monte is right above where it says Del Monte Avenue? Or is the next block down?
Yeah, it would be right below. So if you see Jack's Park there and then you see Del Monte Avenue above it.
Yeah.
And then the parking lots are, you know, right there to the left. Yeah.
But.
And the sports center.
Yes, right. And those aren't considered of, those aren't considered opportunities.
Um, not, not right now. The city staff did, I think it was last year, did an analysis and brought it to council of city owned parking structures. And I think there were three that were proposed, were proposed as potential. And ultimately, the, the decision that council made and Kim, feel free to step in here was. Was that this garage on Kaip would be one that could potentially be offered up for housing. And so that has been included as an opportunity.
Yeah, I think on the, the east and west garages or what you're referring to, there's been a fairly recent. there's been a fairly recent structural analysis that showed those buildings have a longer life than we expected. There's still probably opportunities if the city wanted to be aggressive and do some like storefront wraparounds on the lower level. But at this point, we, we don't see in this housing element timeframe in the next year, eight years to demolish and replace those parking structures with housing. But Cali Principale, that could be the parking garage there could be an option.
It's just two levels with, one level with an open.
Correct. It's a lot easier to demolish that than a multi-story structure that has a longer life.
Mm-hmm. And your density cap overlay is limited to four stories, right?
Oh, the, are you talking about the density cap overlay that's shown on the east downtown there?
Yeah, this one, the checker.
I believe that's accurate.
Yeah.
One of the things we struggled with is that's actually in one of our hazard areas. So as flooding, you know, between Lake El Estero and the ocean and future scenarios, I mean, the last general plan, we spent a lot of time focusing on the east downtown. Since then, the sea level rise projections and everything are just getting worse for east downtown. And we're not seeing it necessarily as a high priority under the guidelines for the housing element that talk about to avoid areas of environmental hazard. So we're, you'll see this makes a conscious choice to push the buildings up the hill, the Bank of America site. Yeah, you can, I mean, you can walk around with these maps, but the ones that are a little bit further up that aren't going to be affected by the flooding.
Is Bank of America being converted?
It's been recently remodeled and on the inside, and I think they have new tenants. You know, this is the struggle with all the infill sites, right? I mean, you either take away parking lots or there's a smaller building on there that then could exist. And will the property owner in the future consider redeveloping that lot? I mean, these are the ones we think are feasible. It's different than Fort Ord that's vacant.
So on that basis, we're, we're assuming, we're projecting that all of the sites shown on the map collectively could accommodate 447 units. And about 202 of those would be for moderate, low and very low-income households because they meet the, the various criteria. The next area is North Fremont, and North Fremont also saw strong support in the survey as a location for, for new housing. The airport safety zones, however, do intersect much of this area. You can see them. They're shown in, in sort of yellow gold on this map. They cover most of the western portion of, of this opportunity area, and they severely limit and restrict the housing potential. However, the parcels along North Fremont tend to be larger in size than, than downtown, which, which is a plus for development. And there's several pairs of properties that are under common ownership and could be developed together. So that also increases development potential. In, yes.
Reading this plan and your comments, a lot of the comments, was there an indication if the people who made them lived in that area or if they lived in another area?
We are not able to make that sort of one-to-one correlation. The, we wanted to anonymize the demographic, and people offer demographic data and as a way of, you know, we wanted to keep it anonymous, so the, we can't trace the responses to the demographics. We can't, we do have the chart that says how many people from this area participated. And so you, you can maybe draw some conclusions from that. Yeah, so on, anyway, on the basis of what we heard from the community and the development potential here, the recommendation is, is three points. First would be to revise the zoning applicable to the area to permit 45 dwelling units per acre on parcels fronting North Fremont with no change to the building heights. And so that's up from 30 dwelling units per acre now. Similar to downtown, we would incorporate a clear statement in the North Fremont specific plan that 100% residential buildings would be allowed. But at the same time, we would also identify potential incentives for projects with a retail and restaurant component, because that is something that community members expressed a strong, a strong preference for. And so those incentives, still to be determined, but they could involve perhaps fee discounts for, for a mixed-use project with a residential or with a restaurant or retail component, or perhaps permit streamlining, something that would, would be attractive and incentivize a retail component. So on this basis, total, all the sites you see on this, on this map have a total collective capacity for 308 units, and 198 of those would be for moderate, low and very low-income households. Moving now to the, the Garden Road Airport Highway 68 area. Here, we heard solid support for apartments and townhomes. The multifamily overlay applies to sites along the southern side of, of Garden Road. And the parcels here also tend to be relatively larger. They range from about 0.9 acres up to six acres in size, so they're a fair bit larger, which, which is helpful for development potential as well. So on the, on the basis of that, the recommendation here would be to increase the maximum density allowed in the multifamily overlay from 30 dwelling units per acre, which it is now up to 50 dwelling units per acre. And then in the future, when water supply is, adequate water supply is available, you could consider also establishing a minimum density for these areas as well. And then additionally, the multifamily overlay would be, the standards would be revised to remove the requirement for covered parking, where parking could be screened from view. And given the topography and, and the way the sites are now, that, that seems possible. And so covered parking would reduce the cost of development and therefore be an incentive.
And I just want to point out, I think our commission's very familiar with Garden Road, and we've had projects there, and that seems familiar. The unusual-shaped parcel sort of at the bottom-right part of the map is actually owned by the school district. And in the Highway 68 area plan that was adopted by the voters back in the 1980s, there's a plan for, I think, up to 300 housing units at that site. So that continues to be a potentially viable site. I will also say that whole area, I call it an upside-down bear or whatever shape you want to call it, but between there and Foothill School or Olmsted is most likely where the county is going to be proposing their low-income, are their housing overlay district for the county housing. Because we got to remember, the county got an allocation too. They're going to be putting it closer to the city. I'm still waiting for verification on that, but we did get a letter as a landlord that it looks like the county will be developing adjacent, possibly developing adjacent to that as well.
Kim, in the past, the school district was looking at moving Monterey High School. Wasn't that the site that they were looking at?
We could ask for an update from the superintendent. I, I have not heard that they're, they're looking to move the high school in recent times.
This was 20 years ago.
Okay, maybe so. But in the plan, it's always shown as, it's, it's been shown as housing for a long time.
They've always thought that the, the site of Monterey High School would be prime land for housing in the city. That's why I asked the question.
They're going to reverse it.
Yeah, we're going to kill the goose by trying to take, usurp that land for something for housing now, and then they won't have a place to release this land that they have now.
Well, we could surely outreach to the superintendent and ask for his input and see if he's able to attend the council meeting next Tuesday. I think that if he's available, that might be helpful.
And, and in general, when the farther east you go, the, the less services and grocery stores and all that kind of stuff exist. Does the state require that those, you know, be part of the planning?
So not as part of the, well, the state doesn't require it, but it does certainly, certainly encourage, encourage it. And I think when we, now, I think now you're talking about the school district site in particular. It's really.
Well, yeah, and we're just about to get to the Fort Ord, especially.
Yeah. Why don't, why don't we table that? And because I think I'm going to address it squarely when we talk about Fort Ord. So on the basis of all of this, we are project, on, I guess I would say the 415 units that we're projecting is only for the Garden Road sites. And all of those meet the criteria for lower-income sites. And so all of them would be for moderate, low and very low income. And then additionally, as Kim said, there is also this school district site, so that would be 300 units for moderate, low and very low. So a total of 700. All the sites that you see on this map, the total projected number of units would be 715.
Except that if the county wants to use the area between the big red school district ownership and Garden Road, wouldn't they need a school?
Well, you have to remember, they've closed Foothill School right now. One of the responses to all this is going to be, what will be, what's the timing of development? What does the reopening of schools look like? They've just closed Foothill School. And so, you know, that's a good question for the, you know, all our other resource agencies too, is, you know, ultimately, there will be responses to the RENA being, such a high RENA being given to the city and how that affects school districts and other things.
We might show that school on this map when we go to the city council meeting.
Label it.
Yeah.
It's important to remember as well that the schools from the district closes, they're taken over by charter. And so they're not only closing, they're still there. It's a separate corporation. I think it's being used by a combination of Monterey Bay Charter and I know that they do.
Going up to eighth grade?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I can move on to the next area, which is Lighthouse. Here again, the community expressed support for new housing, although with less enthusiasm than some of the areas, but still support. The current specific plan allows for 13 dwelling units per acre conditionally. Smaller parcels in this area do, do pose a challenge for development, but a number of the parcels are actually adjacent and under common ownership, which facilitates development in the area. On the basis of what we heard from the community and the, and the extent of development potential here, we're proposing three actions here. One would be to revise the, the standards in the specific plan to permit 100% residential uses on, on Lighthouse. This, again, would be coupled with incentives for, you know, to encourage retail and restaurant uses to help achieve that community vision. And while also making space for, for housing and facilitating housing. And then the third strategy would be here again, as with downtown, to take advantage of, of city-owned lots and garages that are outside of the coastal zone and offer municipal shared parking agreements to projects that propose at least 20 new housing units within 1,000 feet of a city-owned parking lot that's outside of the coastal zone. And again, this would be a way of helping with the development feasibility and incentivizing larger projects that can help the city meet its RENA obligations.
Why not include parking within the coastal zone?
So one of the things I'm learning from the Coastal Commission, they see our parking lots in the coastal zone to be for visitors. And that's the highest priority because visitor-serving uses is their highest priority. We had a project on Canary Row, the old Mackerel Jack's building, where we actually approved a permit to convert the, I think the Planning Commission approved the permit to allow mixed use on the site and to convert the top levels to residential. And they were not, at least at a conversation level, supportive of leasing parking spaces in the, in the Canary Row parking garage to that use, because they saw that as being visitor-serving. They were okay with parking perhaps being on a private lot outside of the coastal zone for that use, but they didn't want to take a publicly designated parking. So it was definitely for me a twist on, you know, I, I guess it's a twist that not understanding that residential is not the highest priority for the Coastal Commission. Their highest, higher priority is visitor-serving commercial and destination. It's the same thing with short-term rentals, right? The Coastal Commission generally wants you to allow short-term rentals in your coastal zones because it opens up more opportunities for people to come into the coastal area that they may not be able to normally do. Where as a city, we've been trying to protect our residential housing stock for residents. So it's just a slightly different.
Would this, would this policy difference make a difference when the city finally adopts an LCP?
We could definitely propose, if, if the, if the Planning Commission and council wanted us to propose a, a change that, you know, and we can see if we can get that through. We're working on our LCP, so we could propose that as a policy and see what the coastal staff and commission's ultimate perspective on that is.
And the LCP would obviously be enacted within the planning cycle period.
Yes.
One of the things that was reinforced by Fukushima was that parking garages adjacent to the coast are an immediate place for those closest to the ocean to gain some altitude. And it was the lifesaving, people literally walking just ahead of the tide as it went up two stories in a parking garage. So they lived because they walked to the parking garage instead of trying to walk a third of a mile further inland. They wouldn't have made it. So that's something we need to keep an eye on. That's one of the things that we do need to, to look at is what are we going to be doing for water, sea water eyes and tsunami dangers?
So then to summarize, based on what we heard from the community and, and implementation of these potential strategies, we see a potential for 381 units in the Lighthouse area. 96 would be for moderate, low and very low-income households. And 285 would be for above moderate. Again, this is mostly because of the smaller parcel size that, that limits what can be attributed to, to lower-income RENA.
Again, this, that, that Lighthouse map, sorry. It's, it's sort of irregardless of historic status of a particular parcel.
Yes, yes.
What do you mean, Terry, in regard to what?
Well, I mean, some of these, some of these red tier-one properties might be historic building.
That, that would be very challenging to adapt to new, more intensive density, if that.
I know, that's, that's my point. I mean, there's environmental, historical basically is environmental, I think.
It's a sequel.
Yeah, right.
Right. It's, yeah, I mean, it, it adds cost and complexity, complexity to development, for sure. There are standards that need to be respected, you know, in terms of preservation and, and reuse. So, yes.
You know, that's a good comment. And maybe it's, it's one we highlight for the council as well. There's two historic, maybe three historic structures. And on Lighthouse Avenue, we got, we have the Harry Green Mansion, and we have the Mariposa Hall. And those are two designated structures. And the senior center that, and Chelsea Park is not shown as an opportunity site. Neither is the Harry Green Mansion, but I think the Mariposa Hall is shown. So that may be a site that ultimately, as you get into discussions with the council, you recommend is removed because it's a multi-story historic building. And maybe that doesn't make sense on that site.
And then some of the, some of the buildings along the, I guess, the east side of Lighthouse, these, these old 1920s sort of mixed-use buildings, there's a bunch of them along there. They, they aren't.
They're not designated.
They're not designated. So they're possibly developable parcels. Okay. Does the, does this new state mandate change the, the, any status of those buildings?
You know, that's a good question. I've, like, you know, I'm curious if we have a housing opportunity. So right now, you submit an application on a site. We determine whether or not it's over 50 years old. We have a historic survey prepared. We have a historic survey prepared and then there's a decision about how to redevelop the site. Keep the older building, build behind, build above. I don't know, do something different. I'm curious, um, what the, because we're going to have to go to more development checklists, just like we did with ADUs on some of these ultimately for objective design standards. So how that, I'm not sure how all that works yet. Maybe Andrew knows.
I would say that, um, we will be doing an EIR for, um, for the project and obviously historic and cultural resources as a component of that will be mapping, um, the, the potential, will be mapping not only designated resources, but potentially eligible resources as well. And so the EIR will likely need to propose mitigation measures for potentially eligible, as yet undesigned, but potentially eligible. Um, and so that can be reflected ultimately in a sequel checklist, um, that's, that's used in the future. You know, is this site potentially eligible? And if so, you know,
That's a complicated EIR and parcel by parcel kind of a, you know, so the, um, we can get the state-approved Rena element, housing element approved, but and then the ERR follows after that.
Well, it's actually being done in, in parallel.
Really? Oh, I,
So we're going to have to certify the environmental impact report and the goal is that to comply with state law is that the city will certify the environmental impact report and prove the general plan change by December fifteenth.
Oh.
Of this year.
Of this year. Yeah. And so that's why we're pushing so hard in the month of June to pick the, you know, the sites so we can start the environmental document. And we'll be following up with all the programs because we really need to start quantification of impacts.
Just a couple of quick comments regarding the mitigation, um, for historic properties. That could easily go down a rabbit hole where a project would be sort of conditionally disapproved by so onerous mitigation that it wouldn't be feasible. And we wouldn't know that until somebody actually makes an application and there's an historic survey done. So it's, it's, you know,
Yes, it's,
There's a very complex pro- uh, process here that the EIR may not fully recognize.
But the EIR can help to, and maybe not for the housing element, rather for the land use element or another element of the general plan, the EIR can provide policy direction. So if there are certain areas, um, uh, I, you know, for example, um, an, an area, uh, with potentially historic resources, but which the community strongly sees as favorable for new housing, we can actually identify sort of catalyst sites and even do some sort of preliminary, uh, assessment to help, uh, I, I've taken, actually I worked in downtown Santa Rosa, which has a lot of historic resources and after the fires, the, the city was very interested in, um, in promoting new housing development. And so the approach we took there is to use the EIR, uh, to identify, um, potentially, uh, potential impacts. And then also to couple that with the planning work that identified, you know, linchpin sort of catalyst sites um, and to do some advanced sequel work on those sites to make a, at least a preliminary determination of, of the, um, of whether they're historic or not. To help, um, with, with the development feasibility rather than falling into the trap that you're mentioning of not knowing until somebody does the survey. So there's, there's a strategic approach that we could take.
Right. And we'll need to keep that in mind. Now, the city's adoption of the housing element, which falls under December fifteenth of this year. That my understanding is that planning cycle begins in two weeks on June thirtieth. Is that not correct?
The, so there's the, uh, projections period and there's the planning period. Um, and what you're talking about that begins in June is the, uh, projections period.
So explain that. So let's say a, a property owner looks at the draft housing element today and sees a, a red box around that person's building. Would he then be able to submit an application on June thirtieth and have it be reviewed and, and, um, processed as if it were part of the new housing element?
I guess, um, what whether or not a site is identified in, uh, as an opportunity site in the housing element, if, if it's so hypothetically, if there was a site that was identified that, that, uh, has zoning that permits housing, but for some reason was not identified in the housing element, that doesn't actually preclude the owner from, um, from developing what's allowed under, under zoning. What the housing element is essentially doing is, is showing the state, which sites are best suited to accommodate, uh, the jurisdiction's, uh, Rena allocation. And, uh, and there may be some programs in the housing element that are geared to specifically facilitating those sites. And so I guess your question then is, could a project that comes forward, say now, um, take advantage of proposed programs? What, uh, and I think the answer to that is, um, the programs don't go into effect until the city council adopts the housing element. Um, and so, uh, the answer is, uh, they could take advantage of it, but only after the city council.
So potentially an applicant could submit, um, prior to December fifteenth, but ultimately that applicant would probably need to wait until adoption before any approval would occur.
Well, it depends if the site needs to be rezoned, for example.
Right.
Yes.
Right. Talking about, you know, opportunity sites that are identified but are not currently, uh, designated for housing.
Right. Most of the, I will say most of the areas that most of the sites in the specific planning area, um, do allow for, for housing now. So, um, but there are some sites.
Not a hundred percent, uh, uh, housing.
That, yeah, that's, that's true. That's true. So yes, there, there is a, there's an, uh, yes, any, uh, property owner wanted to take advantage of anything that's being put forward in the housing element, um, would be anxious to get adopted, to see it adopted. Okay. Just maybe one other point on this, on the schedule. The state has ninety days to review. Once we develop a full draft and put it out for thirty days of, of public review and then planning commission and ultimately the city council okays it, then we send it up to Sacramento for HCD. They have a ninety-day review period. That's a long wait. So we're planning to really, um, focus, get the EIR in motion and on the street to make use of that ninety days so that the EIR, uh, process can run its course and, uh, the housing element, um, comments from HCD, uh, come back and both of the documents can come in front of decision-makers at this, at the same time. So we're trying, we're trying to optimize the schedule by using those, um, those periods.
If there's going to be potentially a legal challenge to the housing element during that ninety-day window, would that throw everything out and suspend the enactment of the housing element?
So the legal challenge won't come until after we adopt. That's the housing element. So if we, if we adopt on December fifteenth.
And then there's a ninety day for.
No, the ninety days comes beforehand.
Oh, that's.
So we're going to be submitting to HCD. Is it in September?
And yes.
I believe in September for the ninety-day review period. So the judicial action or legal things can't be filed until after December fifteenth.
But then even if, right, but even if it got adopted on December fifteenth and there was a legal challenge, would that stifle the housing element from being?
You know, I, I think that'll be a good question, maybe next week for city attorney and I just didn't understand how lawsuits would play out.
Yeah. So I'm going to move on to, um, the Pacific Munoz Cas area, which is of course adjacent to downtown. This is an area, uh, where again, there was, um, support for housing, uh, expressed in the community survey, but perhaps with a little bit less enthusiasm than other areas of the city. Those who supported housing for the area generally expressed a preference for apartments, condominiums and townhomes. And on this basis, the preliminary inventory assumes a capacity for, um, uh, for a hundred and thirty-seven, um, new housing units on underutilized sites that are shown here on this map. Because of the size parameters, they were, they're all attributed to the above moderate category. And then the fire, the, uh, area number six is the Del Monte area. And, uh, um, here again, there was support for housing, but perhaps, um, less support and, um, people who, who did support housing in the area wanted to see sort of apartments, condominiums, townhomes. And, uh, there are a couple of sites that are, uh, adjacent and under common ownership that offer the, the best opportunities. Those are sort of on the eastern end of the, um, of the corridor here. Um, on this basis, we're assuming a hundred and twenty-six housing units and because of the size parameters, they would, uh, all be attributable to moderate, low and very low household.
Can we go back to the Cass?
Yes.
Slide. Now you just mentioned that because of the size of parcels, um, that these would be above moderate and not very low or low. Now, would that be in any type of conflict with their housing?
No, um, no, they, so they're, um, actually, I, actually I misspoke. Um, what I meant to say is it's because of the, the, um, the densities, the density that we're assuming here, which is about sixteen dwelling units per acre. And that's based on the existing as-built density in the area. But, um, the state has determined that for a community like Monterey, um, in order for, uh, uh, housing to be deemed affordable to lower income households, it has to be at at least twenty dwelling units per acre. So because we're using, um, sixteen dwelling units per acre as our projection, all of the units been, have been attributed to, um, above moderate. Um, and that's just for, that's because there is no development proposed on these sites right now. And so for the purpose of projections, um, we're using sixteen and that doesn't make the, the default density of twenty dwelling units per acre. However, if a property owner did actually want to, um, to develop, um, how affordable housing, they could still do that. And then additionally, because the city has inclusionary housing requirements, for any project in the area that poses more than six units, um, they would be required to make twenty percent of the, of the units that they build affordable to moderate and lower income households.
So, so the slide that we have for us does not take into account any potential shared sites, like if you wanted to combine parcels and then it would then allow for twenty units an acre. It doesn't really assume that.
Well, I, I get to that. Uh, I have a, um, when I get to the slide with the big summary matrix, I'll show you how we're accounting for the, for the inclusionary requirement. Right. And then I think I'm going to switch to, um, to the, the Fort Ord, um, area. And this is an area which, as I said, across a, a variety of different factors, really received the, um, the strongest support for housing, not unanimous. There were a, a, a good portion of people who expressed, um, concern or at least interest in protecting the natural resources. Um, and even many of the people who did support housing wanted to make sure that it was done in a way that's well-integrated with the natural environment and, and respects the, the, um, the, the beauty of the area and the, and the, um, the biological resources, um, that exist today on the site. And so, uh, the, you can see here on the map, these two, um, these two parcels today currently do have zoning that would allow for housing. However, in view of the community support, um, for housing in this area, which would include, um, a variety of, of different housing types, a number of people in the survey expressed interest in, um, in this area because specifically it would allow for increased opportunities for homeownership. Um, and so there, there was an interest in, in single-family homes, in townhomes and in some, um, multifamily development as well. But overall, in view of the potential, what we heard from the community, the proposal here, um, would be to, uh, to do a specific plan for the wider area that also includes, um, the sites in the Ryan Ranch area so that this area could be planned holistically. Because in the survey, in the longer version of the survey and in comments on, uh, in the, in the five-minute version as well, community members really exp- uh, expressed that while they, well, overall on balance, they did see, uh, this as a good opportunity for housing. It is not well-served by transit. It doesn't have the infrastructure, um, and it doesn't have a, a mix, uh, of uses. The vision for the area that really came through the comments is for, um, a, a mixed-use village. And so the way to achieve this would be to do a specific plan, which would also plan for how to in- integrate, uh, new housing and other uses thoughtfully to plan for transportation connections, um, to identify infrastructure needs and financing mechanisms to, to make it all, uh, it all real. Um, and so the proposal here is to do a specific plan for this wider area. And overall, the total capacity for new housing across, um, all of the sites shown on, on this map would be twenty-four hundred units. And we're assuming that, uh, one thousand nine hundred and twenty would be for above moderate and twenty percent or four hundred and eighty would be for moderate, um, and lower income households based on the city's adopted, um, inclusionary requirement.
And I just want to add a couple of comments to this. So as we look at this map, we see the airport safety zones in the yellow. And so you can see how the planes, that's why, um, there's really no sites in sort of the middle of the Ryan Ranch areas. We're trying to keep the development out of those areas generally. The other important thing, and it might be worth it if you guys have time this weekend, maybe individually drive up there and you know, go up to Two Upper Reggsdale. You know where the chomp development is. And sort of between that area and South Boundary Road, so between Upper Reggsdale and South Boundary Road is this, um, this whole area. And so it's basically sandwiched a lot of it between two public streets, which you don't really get a sense for. The only part that's really not is what I call that shark fin part that goes the fan part. You know, is more above South Boundary Road, um, and is adjacent to, um, you can see the Ford Ord National Monument. The other piece to keep in mind with this, and I'm sure you'll hear about this. When the city was acquiring this property way back when, when Ford Ord was closing, they made assumptions of what level to clear sites to based on ammunition use and cleanup. And at the time, um, our predecessors, the vision they had was this would be industrial property. So it'd be, it would be like just an extension of Ryan Ranch. And with the hu- new housing numbers, we're potentially looking at this as a housing site. It was only cleared to industrial levels for ammunition cleanup. Which doesn't make a lot of sense to me when I ask people to explain it because industrial foundations and grading can be way more extensive than residential in certain cases. But if we were to develop this as residential, part of the, the development team would have to clean it to a higher level. So it is possible to do. I mean, we've seen it done all throughout Ford Ord, um, but it would be, um, a task that will have to be taken on.
Several years ago, I had a client that was interested in, um, putting an option on purchasing this large parcel. And so I walked it. And this is years ago, but my recollection now was that there was a lot of oak woodland and slopes and habitat that would need to be protected. And so what would happen in the event that a specific plan identifies less housing here than what you're projecting? And the specific plan is not enacted until much later, until after the adoption of the housing element.
So you're raising a good point. Uh, HCD is likely to ask the same sort of question. Um, and so in our action plan in the draft housing element, if the consensus from the community and decision-makers is ultimately to include this site and to do a specific plan for it, we would include a, a very specific program that commits to, to timing, um, for completing this specific plan. Um, and HCD would want to see, uh, specific milestones and steps along the way to give them confidence that the specific plan would be prepared and adopted within the planning period.
Is that one of the reasons why there's a buffer in the matrix?
Exactly. Exactly. Yeah.
And, yeah, and just remember through the environmental review process, we haven't done this very much in the city. You can adopt statement of overriding considerations and for, if your community decides certain public goals, you know, you, you, the environmental document needs to acknowledge publicly the environmental impacts of the project. It doesn't mean that you can't approve a project with environmental constraints or environmental impacts. Um, we haven't done it very much. I think we did it in Old Canary Row with Ocean View Plaza Project in two thousand and four. Our city always tries to strive for the perfect project, but just so you know, there are there, you know, where are we going to put two thousand four hundred housing units? If, if we don't put them here.
Yeah, this is really, um, this one map is, is providing two-thirds of the, um, of the Rena.
Well, and then it begs the question, what happens during the seventh cycle when we've used up all available lands?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a question of whether the seventh cycle will, uh, will increase Rena numbers again, or whether it'll focus more on implementation because Because it's not just Monterey. Every community in in the state got an enormous Rena allocation this cycle. And will it, you know, based on past performance, it's it's highly likely that most communities won't approach their their Rena numbers. And so then, I mean, I'm just speculating, but it seems possible that the seventh cycle will be more about implementing and 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 building out the the remaining Rena from the sixth cycle. That's a possibility.
And a key issue that happened at the regional level is this concept of affirmatively furthering fair housing. Monterey was given a much larger Rena number than all of our surrounding jurisdictions. And that was a regional decision. And the our city council member voted against our Rena. But there was there was a real feel that Monterey has a lot of jobs. We have a lot of people community community into our job center that the housing needs to be provided in Monterey. And so you look at Marina's numbers, I think they're closer to the six hundreds. I forget what's I mean, but we are much larger than a lot of the other, if not all the other communities on the peninsula. There was a there was a social justice affirmatively fair housing regional decision that shifted the housing in this direction. And if we are, I mean, our goal in the planning office is ultimately that this housing get built and that we meet our goal. So if if we're successful in eight years, if we have a water supply, then your question is where is the next round of Rena going to go? And that's going to be even, I mean, we're basically, it's almost every lot in the city that's that's vacant or underutilized. We're capturing.
Now, I read an article today out of curiosity about there was apparently a flawed methodology that HCD employed that created twice the number of Rena allocations for half a dozen Bay Area jurisdictions. And I think that was being raised and challenged. It wasn't it wasn't Ambag, it was some of the other jurisdictions, but just it was interesting.
I'll just say, in the Southern California cities, a lot of them sued and took different court actions. They've lost every court action. And I think our goal is to comply with the state requirement. And clearly, our city council is interested in affordable housing and has made that a priority for our community. So we're looking at how to best accommodate these units that we've been assigned.
How come the very low, low and moderate is so low in this on this map?
Because we've assumed twenty percent on we we just assumed twenty percent of the total based on the inclusionary requirement. That's actually one of the discussion questions we have for you. You know, is there is there interest? Should we look at a a higher percentage?
Does does the state mandate require a certain percentage? Low, you know, very low and moderate?
It does not. One thing they will be thinking about, though, is of the fair housing issue. You know, if the percentage of low and very low is too high, HCD might say that there you maybe you're fostering an over-concentration of affordable housing in the area. I don't think this balance would would, you know, trigger that concern for them. But it's something to be conscious of. We we couldn't, for example, put all of the the low and very low income Rena just in port, or that would be a concentration they, you know, that HCD would would object to.
And am I correct that the housing element and the and ATV's requirements for implementing this assumes that local jurisdictions, local agencies, base density or or base the density projections on base zoning density as opposed to a density bonus?
Correct, yes. We we can't.
And so there is a potential to increase this and to have a better buffer, should a lot of these projects employ a density bonus, which could be triggered by the twenty percent inclusionary.
Well, yeah, you're right. We can't factor in the 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 state density bonus. And so if if property owners, developers choose to invoke state density bonus, then we actually could get more housing than than projected, again, assuming there's water supply available to support.
That would be an incredible incentive for develop for especially for property developers to provide the twenty percent.
In particular, if it's going to be a planned community of some and if if you're looking at the numbers being that high, I know they're looking at Highway sixty eight improvements, but we were talking about a large number of commuters going into Monterey. How would it work with Caltrans to facilitate getting into the plan now, which is already looking at improvements to handle the traffic that they're currently looking at with widening and traffic circles? Is there something that we could do that's also going to help with with that, working with the state in Caltrans?
Yeah, as part of the EIR, we will be doing a traffic analysis that includes not only VMT, but also level of service. And so once we once we have the inventory firmed up, we have traffic engineers ready to to run the model. And so we will know through the through the traffic study for the EIR where the pinch points are and will be able to start to propose, you know, mitigation to address them. And the the regional transportation plan is going to need to to be updated to reflect the cumulative development in all communities of of the Rena. And so the there's going to have to be probably the identification of new transportation projects, improvement projects to address regionally the growth and and a reprioritization of projects as well. So they'll all come out of not only Monterey's housing element and EIR, but the environmental review of of other communities on the peninsula as well.
And the same with Garden Road.
Not to mention the emergency planning process that would is already way behind. And it would this would generate even more pressure. If you had a tsunami forecast, you cannot evacuate because you can't move cars. So people are going to be held there during that event. So it actually, you need to be working simultaneously to get four lanes going eastbound before we get all this mass living here. So we it's things that need to be joined. And we're not right this at this point, we're not joining them. They're all individual process.
I will say we are updating our safety element with this planning effort as well. And it includes, there's the, I think the Fair and Peers team is going to be doing an evacuation analysis. I have the same concern. How are we going to get out of a major situation? The one good news is this site isn't subject to a tsunami, right? And it's outside of generally the airport safety zones. It's not in our liquefaction zones. They would have a shorter route potentially if they needed to on South Boundary Road and then out through Marina. But they're in a safer place here than so versus we were looking earlier at the downtown right next to Lake Elastero. That lower downtown area in the tsunami is pretty significantly impacted.
What about a fire zone?
Involved in the fire zone process in Double Beach back in the eighties. And plans were inadequate back then. So they're they haven't improved because we haven't added any roadways.
Yeah, so we're going to be looking at evacuations routes, but the the bottom line is Highway one's not increasing in size. I mean, we have to, we're going to have to be more creative than that. And I don't know what the answer is yet, but.
Well, we had a recent run-up to this with the flooding when, you know, the Baja River and in the rivers were.
Must became an island again.
So the these opportunity areas were a major focus because, as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, there are the areas with the greatest potential to accommodate new housing, but they're not the only areas. There's additionally, there's other strategies and locations that could accommodate new housing. And so let me touch on those. There's one hundred and thirteen vacant parcels that today have a low-density residential designation and could potentially be available for housing. They're typically zoned RE and R1. So those have been factored in. There's twenty vacant parcels with medium-density residential zoning, so R2 and R3. Those are also factored into the inventory. Additionally, there's a couple, and you can see them here, they're shown in pink on this map of of sites, opportunity sites of relatively good size that are outside of those opportunity areas. So one fifty Mar Vista Drive, which is the Elks Lodge site that has the existing building and a large surface parking lot around it. The five ninety Perry Lane, which is owned by the museum behind the Estero Car Wash and the courthouse site, the county courthouse. It's been announced that it's going to be relocated, and so that is a a site that's potentially available as well.
Actually, that's Allen Drive, not not Aguirre.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, now the memorandum that Andrew, that you wrote to Christie mentions and assumed R3 for the courthouse site. And it seems to me that that would be an opportunity to upzone it to an RM or, you know.
Yeah, I'm sure that's that's a possibility. So I think the R3 does allow for up to thirty dwelling units per acre, but certainly I I just picked that because it's an available zone and in consideration of this what's surrounding it as well.
But what's surrounding it is the
Military.
The military housing over there. And that's a mix of multifamily and single family. And the multifamily is actually the closer portion to the courthouse site. So it would be perfectly compatible with the existing land use.
Okay. Additionally, accessory dwelling units can count towards Rena. State law provides that we can look at the average number of ADUs that were permitted each year since two thousand and eighteen, which is the year that new state law went into force incentivizing and facilitating ADU production. And so we took a look at permitting trends here in Monterey. You can see them on the chart here. On average, the city has permitted eleven per year. And so we can take that number and project it forward for for each of the eight years in the upcoming sixth cycle. And on that basis, we've assumed eighty-eight new ADUs over the eight-year planning period. However, with a strong suite of of programs that would offer additional incentives or further facilitate you development of ADUs and junior ADUs. If if decision-makers in the community think that would be appropriate, we can incorporate that and we can project more than the the eleven. A lot of communities in California have done that.
I'm sorry, go ahead. It seems like the eighty-eight is a negligible number. I'm I'm kind of shocked that it's that low, but I I understand now.
It's water, right?
It's water.
You've got to eke out an extra, you got to remove a bathroom in your existing house. Maybe you've got a sink in your garage. You got to remove those and there's only so many housing units. This is the one part that I really, you know, I I think accessory dwelling units are perhaps the easiest type of housing to build. And I mean, they're low-scale, you can tie into the existing water meter, you can tie into the existing sewer systems. If we had enough water to actually build new units, this seems like, you know, we might really see these numbers change in Monterey, but everybody's constrained by water.
Does the, you know, like the city of Seaside and the city of Pacific Grove actually have water credits available? And and I'm doing ADUs right now in both those jurisdictions. And everybody there is sort of taking advantage of them. Does the city have any water credits available?
So we have a few. We're using our water for the Mid Penn Housing behind City Hall. And so that's basically where our water is going to go, but it's not that much. And so the difference what happened in Pacific Grove is they were able to put more take some, it was at their golf course off of the municipal supply and they got a credit. So that's how they came up with their water. Seaside hasn't run out of water yet. They still have water from their original allocation, like many, many years ago, twenty, twenty-five years ago. San City had the D cell plant, but I understand they're getting water. I mean, because they're obviously doing a lot of development, right? With the the area across from Costco. Marina Coast has water for the city of Marina. It's really the city of Monterey where I feel like we are really boxed in about what we can do.
Is it possible for private organizations to drill a well within the Cal Calam's watershed without?
To serve your own parcel.
Your own parcel.
Otherwise, you have to get a water distribution system, which is across property lines is is a lot more difficult.
But if you were looking at developing one of these larger lots in, let's say, Garden Road, if that was possible to to do your own well and then cover the expenses with a larger unit for your own water purification expenses, that would still be possible to do without going through Monterey Peninsula Water District.
No, you still have to go through them.
True, but there'd be a mechanism that would be usable.
So we did the Iris Canyon Care Facility is served on three wells behind Del Monte Center. All of those units. I will say that's generally from a state-level perspective, they would like to see fewer private water systems. And they would like to see everything controlled at a municipal level. Clearly, the best option for us is that Calam will be able to deliver water to our sites.
Within this planning cycle period.
So I mean, I think we have fairly good that they but within three years, there will be additional water available. But it's only the problem or the challenge I'm having with the numbers is right now the monitor, they've only reserved enough water for about three hundred housing units. So the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District's water projections assume that based on historic growth patterns, et cetera, and the Ambag analysis, that we're not going to build that much. So they're looking at like three hundred housing units in the timeframe. And we've said, we think you need to look at a greater percentage of housing units. You know, it's a challenge. I I think we'll have, I think we'll get water for three hundred new housing units, but I don't know that the cease and desist order is going to be lifted and we can actually set new water meters. We may be able to do three hundred new ADUs. Because anyways, there's a lot to that. Christie wrote an interesting paper that went to our city council that sort of outlined this at the beginning of the housing element period. But water will continue to be a constraint for us. We may get enough water for three hundred housing units, not three hundred, not three thousand six hundred and fifty-four.
The state of California has already had discussions, state senate on restricting the capability of just anybody putting a new straw into the same glass. Because it's it's a finite resource. You put more straws in it, you're not getting more water, you're just getting more use of.
Well, it just depends where that's.
So the state of California is looking at seeing what they can do to restrict that.
But HCD's guidelines stipulate that there needs to be infrastructure capacity for during this planning period for the full build-out.
So they will encourage us, they will still require us to plan for units, even if we cannot provide the infrastructure. We have to have programs. And we I I think they've even been suggesting some ambitious programs.
Was that like a an exception because Monterey is such a unique case study or?
I don't know.
I mean, different it water and the Monterey Peninsula is a unique issue within the state, but other other jurisdictions do have similar sort of complexities that you maybe it's not that particular requirement, but there's another requirement that they're challenged to meet. And so the the solution that HCD staff recommends is that you you write a program or a couple of programs to address, to to explain how you're going to address the constraint. And so with with respect to infrastructure, HCD ideally, you know, all of your sites, from HCD's perspective, they're all on vacant land that's available now, that has the infrastructure that's close to transit and and boom, you're good. But if you can't do that, you do as much as you can that meets the guidelines. And then for the other sites, you develop programs that are going to facilitate build-out and those go into the action plan that I was talking about. And so that's what we'll have to do, a lot of 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 programs to talk about, to address a lot of very complicated issues that are at play here in Monterey.
Well, I mean, thank God for the, you know, the Ford Ord land. Because the, you know, and because you can, the thing about this eighty-eight number is you can document it and it's, you know, it's something that's solid, so, you know, we don't have to worry about it, I guess. But we might get more if there's more water. We might get more ADUs.
Oh, I just had a leg cramp. That's okay, it'll go away. It'll go away.
Misery being optional.
Right. So that, summarizing, summing it all up. This is a map of where the sites you can, are, you can see that they're relatively evenly distributed throughout the, throughout the community. And this is a summary table into, you can see that we've included. Area by area, the projections. We've also included here the, the, the various sites, the courthouse site, the school district site, the. Perry Lane site, Elk Lodge site, the vacant residential sites that I mentioned as well. In total, the inventory demonstrates a capacity for. Five thousand four hundred and ten units. Now that's in excess of the Rena allocation. But as was alluded to, that's to ensure that there is a buffer. So that in the event that any of these sites don't develop as anticipated, there's still. Capacity to, to meet the Rena at all times and satisfy the requirements of state law.
Is there any danger that the state will up their requirement?
Not within the eight-year period.
I'm sorry?
Not, you mean.
If they will upgrade their current requirements to encapsulate that number.
Oh. You mean for the, not within this cycle, the Rena is set for this cycle. The Rena is set for this cycle. What I did want to point out on this, on this chart though, is that. We're showing the capacity of sites that meet the requirements for lower income. And for sites that don't meet the, the requirements for lower income, those are counted as above moderate. However, because the city has adopted inclusionary housing requirements. They require that any project of more than six units make twenty percent of their units available to moderate. And lower income household sites. Even though some of the above moderate sites, for example, the above moderate sites downtown or on Lighthouse. To the extent that they will involve more than six units, twenty percent. Will have to be according to inclusionary requirements available to moderate and lower income sites. And so we've done an adjustment. That one hundred and eighty-eight number there represents twenty percent of the above moderate infill sites. That is reallocated through the inclusionary requirement to, to lower income and moderate income. And on that basis, we've come up with a, an inventory that we think has the capacity for two thousand four hundred and fifteen. Units that would be available to moderate and lower income and two thousand nine hundred and ninety-five that would be available to above moderate. Now that represents a substantial buffer for the above moderate and a very thin buffer for. For the moderate and lower income sites.
And Andrew, I, I think that your Zoom share is on the wrong graph. So if you could please. Unshare your screen and then reshare it. That should help. Got to make sure our folks at home know what we're talking about.
Is, let me try this again. Stop share.
There we are.
There. Yes, I, I was pretty much done, but that's the, that's the overall capacity. There is only a very small buffer on the, the moderate and lower. But one potential way to, to help to increase that buffer would be to explore with. Churches and other religious facilities in the community, if they are interested in, in potentially developing affordable housing. And so we've begun the process of identifying church properties. That have, for example, vacant land or large areas of surface parking lot that could be potentially used for housing if the churches or religious facilities are interested. We've initiated a process to, to reach out to them. And we'll be discussing with them whether they have interest, what challenges they might face. And how the city could support them in, in, in developing housing and perhaps. With a congregational overlay that would facilitate affordable housing on churches that, that are interested in pursuing it. And that could be one strategy for, for increasing the buffer to provide a little more margin of security. And so with that, I will just highlight a couple of questions that we'd really like to hear your input on tonight. So first and foremost, are the sites and strategies proposed here appropriate to include in a draft housing element that'll be released for public review later this? This summer? Do you have any thoughts on other sites that could be added, perhaps to help increase that? Other sites or strategies, I should say, that could be added to, to help increase that buffer particularly for, for lower income sites. Should the city develop programs to incentivize and facilitate ADU production beyond that eleven per year? A lot of other communities in California have done that. So we'd be interested to hear if you think that's something we should do here too. And then finally, as I mentioned, the, we've assumed twenty percent of those twenty-four hundred units at Fort Ord Garden. Fort Ord Ryan Ranch would be affordable to moderate and lower income households. But is there any interest in perhaps considering a high requirement that a higher percentage should be for. Moderate and lower income households at that location, which is owned by the city. And so the city has a lot of more control there.
Thank you. So we've been pretty active in asking questions. Maybe we could. Do a round of commissioner questions and then go to public comment. Peter, should we start with you?
I have a lot of comments and follow-up questions. So it's going to sound a little wonkish.
Why can we do that? Kim, can we start with public comment and then come back to commissioner?
Absolutely.
Do we have anybody online, Jennifer?
There is a hand raised. Before I get to that, I just want to state for the public that you can join by Zoom. From a computer or phone using the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at iSearchMonterey.org. To join by telephone, dial eight, three, three, five, six, eight, 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 six, four, toll-free. Then enter the webinar ID, one, six, one, nine, nine, zero, eight, zero, three, nine. Once again, the phone number to call is eight, three, three, five, six, eight, 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 six, four. And the webinar ID is one, six, one, nine, nine, zero, eight, zero, three, nine. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. Our first commenter named Tom Reeves, you should be able to speak now.
Good evening. My name is Tom Reeves. I live in New Monterey. I've enjoyed your conversation on this matter. I just want to make a couple of comments. I, I know that when it comes to Rena, you're counting at least some portion of J ADUs. And ADUs towards your allocation. And this makes me a little bit nervous, at least as far as the JDUs are concerned. I'm currently constructing a JDU. And my intention is not to rent it. It's for my wife and I to use as we get older. We'll have a downstairs bedroom now because of that. So I, and then the other part of my concern is that I've heard the council talk about a vacancy tax. So what I'm concerned about is that we're, this JDU is going to be thrown into the bucket of a rental unit that's going vacant in air quotes. And so anyhow, I thought I'd just throw that out there for your consideration as you go through your deliberations. How to count things or not count them. The other thing I'm concerned about with respect to ADUs is. Liz, I'm sure a lot of people have expressed is the concern of having a two-story structure within four feet of my backyard fence. You know, being built on my neighbor's yard. Now, I, I realize that you can't, you can't stop that from happening necessarily, but. I was wondering if maybe you could consider some incentives for people, for example. If they go more than eight hundred square feet. Have a, a greater setback or a lower top elevation, something of that nature to. Encourage people to go to something more of a convent, to more of a conventional type. Side yard and rear yard setback. The other thing that strikes me as unusual in this whole state mandate, and I'm sure you've discussed this too, is. It seems like the element of affordability is vacant. And I think what we're going to end up getting are a bunch of expensive rental units. Quantity, in my opinion, doesn't necessarily equal economy. And there's, there's many examples of resort communities that are packed cheap to jowl. And the real estate prices haven't gone down at all. They, they've continued to go up. And in Monterey could very well be one of those places. It's, it's the environment that makes this a desirable area. So then one thing that would drive the price of housing down is to make it an undesirable place to live. And I don't think any of us want that. So thank you very much. Good work.
Thank you. And maybe we can go to council chambers and have some of the people that are here answer and then we'll go back. To anybody else who's online.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission and staff. Luis Osorio, former member of the Architecture Review Committee. And former planning commissioner for, I think it was about six or eight years until about twenty fifteen. So the, I, I just want to make a couple of general comments. One is the housing issue in locally and in the state and throughout the nation. Is that there's a housing crisis. And there are many reasons, economic and land use and otherwise, why. There is a housing crisis. And I think one of the issues is that land use regulations and the way. We have conceived land use and zoning matters for the last fifty or eighty years is that it, it. It has become very restrictive. And, and I think from that perspective. We all and commissioners and city council members and staff and consultants. We, we, we need to take a different approach that is. That I would think that we need to all change our chip, mental chip. In, in how we perceive policy, because policy, going back to my comment about being restrictive, is that we, we have conceived. Policy to be, to, to not allow. And that's one of the reasons why there's not enough housing units, because. Communities don't want housing and the history of development is, is that. It, it's taken us to where we are. So I think the commission needs to take a different approach on how we all. I mean, I heard a lot of questions. We did this specific plan a few years back and a lot of the issues with all due respect. And a lot of the questions have been discussed ad nauseam here at different times. In terms of, of the opportunity sites. Going back to just the comment I just made, we, we've, I, I agree with the downtown, the North Fremont. Lighthouse and the other ones. And I think in, we need to think. Policies, new policies. For those areas, for the existing ones in the downtown that are complimentary to what's already on the specific plan. And at the same time are an evolution of those policies. Because when we did the, the, I mean, the, the policies have to reflect the times, right? We're not ten years ago, we're not fifteen years ago, we're not twenty years ago. And that's one, that was, in my mind, that's one of the beauties of the downtown specific plan. And the three specific plans that the prior commission completed. Is that those policies were modern at the time that they were adopted. I mean, the. Document that predated. The downtown specific plan, if you will allow me just a couple of minutes. Or an extra minute, thank you. They were a far cry from what was in the old downtown plan from the nineteen eighties. And so my, my overall comment is that I think, you know, the, the consultant and staff are taking. You know, the, the right approach, but we all need to conceive things differently. Because that's where we are. And that's the reason why the state is coming up with all these. You know, these numbers that we all perceive as impossible, right? But there's a crisis. And it's affecting, you know, affordable housing part, the lower housing, the lower income. And so there needs to be a more holistic approach, like, like the consultant. Indicated. And so like for the opportunity size, the, the, the courthouse. And maybe, you know, some of the religious sites, there needs to be a new conception of zoning for those areas. That is not just. Why are we going to have mixed use? You know, for the Ford or the specific plan is the right thing to do. Because you need to create a community up there. You cannot just have a bunch of housing units out there with no services. And that has evolved the concept of mixed use. So I'll, I'll make more comments.
All right, Luis.
Come around. Thank you.
Any other comments in chambers?
Good evening. Planning Commission, planning staff. Andrew, thank you. My name is Brendan Connolly. I'm a resident, been a resident in Monterey for over twenty years. I'm a landowner in Monterey. And I agree with Mr. Osorio's comments. It, following this issue, it strikes me that this takes a more, especially in Monterey with the task you guys have been put with. A more kind of radical approach. Reconsidering some kind of fundamental things that we've considered values here. I really just have one comment, one question about this survey for this forum. In this, in the report, you, you surveyed. The recent projects that were done in an attempt to kind of make projections. But those projections, which. Bear with them. Maybe proposed zoning, and maybe this is my misconception, but it seems that it, it carried proposed zoning. densities based on the previous projects that were done. That's based on static zoning and, and the. Purpose of this Rena allocation, my understanding is to upzone. Areas where it makes sense, such as the downtown corridor, where you keep the density where, where it is, where you can, where you can put it. Sites have been identified, right? And so maybe this is the, the misconception, but I, I, in previous talks with staff. My understanding is, is a commercial property that doesn't have a, a residential zoning designation is, is allocated. The potential for thirty dwelling unit per acre. Well, in your slideshow, Monerous, Cass and Pacific is going to be down zoned to fifteen point nine units per acre. And I don't see how that's going to help us achieve any goals. Or reach any of the objectives set forth by the Rena allocations. So. Take that as my comment. I encourage you to. Increase the density where it belongs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for being here. My name's Catherine, resident of Monterey most of my life, but not, not quite all of my life. So I'm encouraged to hear some of the suggestions in the meeting packet for today. Really like the ideas of increased density and a variety of the focus areas. The suggestion that residential projects will be designated as permitted uses in a variety of areas instead of conditionally permitted uses. I like the idea of offering the municipal shared parking agreements and some other creative parking solutions would be great to toss in there too. And I'm a big fan of ADUs in general and agree with some of the comments. I think those have been stifled by the availability of water. So we haven't fully realized the power of the ADU quite yet. I would like to see a little bit of improvement to get this beyond what I'm going to call a paper exercise. As I was reading this, I noticed quite a few sites on the inventory that are currently fully operational commercial sites. And I have a hard time seeing my way to those landowners tearing down viable business, businesses or things that were just developed. So I would suggest contacting those owners and seeing who's actually interested to move things forward with residential construction. Additionally, some of the sites had some practical constraints that I was worried about, quite a few gas station sites. Those would require some remediation, not to say that can't be done. It's just costly. So those might not be the greatest affordable housing sites to develop. Additionally, some of them were on really challenging topography, valleys, hillsides, things like that, that the city of Monterey has typically not. Encouraged development on. So unless some of those hillside development policies change, some of. encouraged development on. So unless some of those hillside development policies change, some of the sites might warrant a second look. And then Ford Ord is of particular concern to me. We're putting a lot of eggs in that basket in this plan, and I think it's especially prone to lawsuits for, from environmental groups. So either increase the buffer or increase the other areas density to offset some of those risks for environmental lawsuits. And then I'd just like to leave you kind of with what I call the exercise in getting out of our own way. I think that's what this is all about. We've been in our own way with housing for a very long time and we haven't seen housing production. So my asks are ministerial permitting for housing projects, increased density across the board, objective design standards, and I'm going to have the unpopular opinion of the night for this next one, but minimize the inclusionary housing requirements to the greatest extent possible. It was suggested in the course of this presentation that it be increased specifically in the Ford Ord area, and that's not something I'd be supportive of. Very challenging to meet 20% now on a financial level and make a project feasible, increasing it could kill housing projects outright, more so than happens now. And I'll leave you with my little personal anecdote, like a lifelong Monterey resident. I'm laughing, I bless and promise. I'm, I'm very lucky. My grandfather's in his 90s and he's still with us. He lives in one of the, what I'll call newer subdivisions in Monterey, and he recently celebrated his 65th houseiversary. So if that isn't telling, right, that one of the newer subdivisions, 65 years old, that's a problem. So again, radical change and, and exercise in getting out of our own way. So thanks for your time, everyone.
Thanks, Catherine. Anybody online, Jennifer?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sharing. So my list of participants went somewhere else. I see no hands raised currently. So just a reminder, if you're joined by Zoom on the computer, there is a raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. Or if you're joined by phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. No hands are going up.
Okay, well, let's pull it back. We'll end public comment. Should we start with Peter?
Sure. I've got kind of a long-winded set of comments, so bear with me. I'll try to make it quick as I can. Andrew, you had mentioned, I believe on this, on the opportunity site for the school that the city could pursue an enhanced infrastructure financing district to help facilitate the public improvements. And I would suggest that the same apply for the Ford Ord Ryan Ranch. Number one. Number two, regarding the ADU ordinance. Apparently California government code 65852.2 for those who want to memorize government code citations requires local jurisdictions to submit their ADU ordinance to HCD for oversight review. And it does not appear that Monterey has done so yet. So that should be tasked before.
Yeah.
Is that, we've actually submitted it every time we've updated our ADU ordinance.
Oh, I have a, the HCD has a website of all the jurisdictions that have done so. Monterey is not.
So I can prove that we submitted it. So I'll bring that to my attention.
Yeah, that's true. And then regarding future opportunity sites, we talked briefly about the military housing by the courthouse site. It's called La Mesa Housing. And it's owned and operated by DOD. Last month, a consultant from the DOD gave a presentation to city council regarding the compatible compatibility use study. And the subject of housing came up and specifically the impacts of DOD housing on Monterey residents. And as many people here know, DOD is housing some, but not all of their officers and enlisted people. And the rest are impacting the city of Monterey's housing supply in an adverse manner. And so the consultant agreed that DOD would be willing to further a conversation with the city to lessen the impact of housing. And so to that end, it seems to me that when I did a drive by La Mesa this morning, there was a lot of open space. There was a lot of low density. There was half of the area up there was at least half of the area seemed to be comprised of 50-year-old poorly constructed two-story apartment buildings. And so one notion that came to mind was if DOD is having an impact on local housing supply, maybe they can fix the problem on their own property and enter into a development agreement with the city to do a master plan and reformat the entire area up there. That would include perhaps a vibrant ADU program for all the single family and to reconstruct some of these two-story apartments to four-story apartments. I don't know if this is quantifiable, because you're going to need to establish what, how many units this is going to result in, but that probably will not be able to fact be factored until there's a feasibility study, but it's just something to consider and maybe that can be used as another buffer.
Can I just add a point of clarification there? So the city of Monterey, it was actually a city of Monterey consultant that prepared the compatible use study. We as a city applied for a DOD grant and we prepared the countywide study. So that was our consultant indicating it was a possibility, not the DOD, but it's clearly something we can housing on military basis is something that we could discuss with them.
Right. And I did check with HCD and there's a section in there that you're probably familiar with, Andrew, is called exempt entity controlled sites. And it covers entities within jurisdictions that are basically controlled by federal or state or other agencies outside of the city. And so there is a process that you can capture additional housing in these areas through a somewhat step-by-step process, documentation, so forth. Let's see, some more specific, specific comments regarding the, some of the key points in the memorandum that was part of our packet. The Garden Road. My own personal belief is that there was a recommendation in the memorandum for there to be a minimum density applied as a potential strategy. And my take on that is that minimum density ordinances, they typically use FARs. And that can be complicated when applying a density bonus. Because density bonuses, as you know, uses maximum base density as the baseline and not a minimum FAR. So you have these two competing methodologies. If you want to try to do a density bonus with a, with a minimum minimum density ordinance. So my personal recommendation would be to not apply a minimum density. The, are there other sites that should be added? I'm not so sure about the Monterey School District. I, I'm on the fence on that. Originally, when I saw it, I thought, yeah, this looks like a good site. But after the discussion tonight, I'm vacillating on that one. La Mesa Housing, which I previously mentioned, the DOD site. Finally, I think another potential opportunity site would be the Del Monte Shopping Center, and that hasn't been discussed at all. So there's been a recent trend in urban design strategies to reformat underperforming shopping centers throughout both California and, and the nation to multifamily housing. And there are developers that actually specialize in doing just this. And so obviously, Del Monte has water, it has acreage. It has underperforming retail spaces. It could be a good candidate for that. Let's see, should the city develop programs to incentivize ADUs? Absolutely yes. And I've got a whole bunch of recommendations here regarding that. The first would be to conduct more public outreach on the city's ADU ordinance and state housing law updates. And then to, for planning, to continue to update the ADU webpage to reflect new state laws that may affect the types of ADUs that can be economically constructed. When I went into the city's website, it didn't look like it was updated to reflect the new 2022 HCD accessory dwelling unit handbook. It's still referred to the 2020 which has legacy laws that are not applicable. The I think that the city should establish building permit processes for installing prefab ADUs. These are sometimes more economical for homeowners, but currently there's not really anything codified in the building code for this. And so I think that if this is something that the city wants to pursue, there should be further discussion about it. Also, the city should clarify that ADUs and JADUs are allowed in the multifamily residential overlay district. Since ADUs are allowed in any zone that has single family or multifamily. And regarding the multifamily residential overlay district, I would suggest that that be applied to Del Monte so that that could then be wrapped in a compliant area for multifamily housing. The city might want to amend its fee structure to reduce administrative costs for ADUs and JADUs for building permits and utility connections. The city can consider the creation of pre-approved permit-ready stock ADU plans. Let's see. And then some general comments. I think first and foremost would be for the city to consider the creation of a density bonus ordinance. Obviously, you know, it's a state law and developers who provide certain percentage of affordable housing are entitled to the density bonus. And I think the city should promote that. The city could also identify available water credits for each opportunity site. That would be in a combined database as an appendix to the housing element. And this would assist developers with information right off the bat in terms of the potential development usability of that opportunity site. And then let's see. The city should continue efforts to promote affordable housing by conducting outreach, citizen participation, joint city council planning commission study sessions like we're going to have on Tuesday, educational sessions regarding state density bonus law, Health and Accountability Act, ADU development efforts, water availability, availability and legislative updates regarding affordable housing. So this is really kind of a, a catchall for educating both planning commissioners, city council persons, as well as citizens alike regarding some of the more technical planning aspects that really kind of governs everything that we're doing. And then conducting outreach regarding funding sources such as the Monterey Bay Housing Trust, the CARES Act, CDBG funds. I'll go through, I'll skip through some of this stuff, but anyway, I think that there's potential for the city to really make this a robust housing element. And ultimately, it's going to require citizen participation. It's going to require dedication on the part of all of us, the city council, planning staff, which by the way, you've done a great job on all this, and so have you, Andrew. So that's pretty much what I have to talk about.
Thanks.
It's up to me now. First of all, I wanted to thank Andrew. I thought that was a very complex project put together with good wordsmithing. Because it came together so that I could understand it and pretty comprehensive. There were some things, obviously, that we will be discussing, but some of the highlights to me were the percentage of what the city is looking at as inclusionary housing in these projects. That is, these zones go from about 66% in some cases to 100% recommended they be included. My study is a professional study. I attended detailed study sessions on the problems that cities have with inclusionary housing. When you start putting a lot of people with low economic levels in a certain neighborhoods and put them all together without the influence of other people who are above that moderate level, you design in problems. And that's my perspective. I don't want to design in problems. I would like to see it a much broader mix. You may take the same number of units, but we didn't identify to date multiple neighborhoods in this city that were just not mentioned. And in my mind, I know a lot of those neighborhoods, as that lady just spoke to, have been there since the 50, late 50s, early 60s. And some of them need to be replaced. A lot of them have been maintained very well, but and the idea that we couldn't take two of those houses, merge them into a multiple story next unit is something that would need to be mentioned. We have a lot of opportunities here, but let's not push, push, push all the eggs into small baskets that's spread out among the city. If we're going to be doing any more of these studies, I would include all the neighborhoods of the city. And we counted Ryan Ranch as a neighborhood, but it's really not a neighborhood yet. Right now, it's just that goes to the second issue. We had Light Industrial on Garden Road. But for some reason, that is morphing. So then the city of Monterey says, we're going to put it out to Ryan Ranch. Well, that's morphing into a medical, a medical campus. So if we, we don't want to lose our second effort here at Light Industrial. So if we're going to be doing, we need to study why we lost Garden Road as a light commercial area. And if, so we don't replace that effort into our secondary site. And to me, it's, it's the easiest site to develop, but as we talked about tonight, without a neighborhood, we got to come up with a specific plan. Well, the specific plans we've done in the past all were included in the neighborhoods. Because my next issue is going to be how many sites did you identify that were good for four-story and five-story in each of these areas, zones, multiples? Because that's the reason I asked the question earlier about how much on North Fremont did the neighbors contribute to the ideas about multiple stories? Because I got to tell you, like Luis, I went through that process on the specific plan, Kim did. And so they didn't want more than three stories. They fought three stories. But it had to be reasonable. So now we're talking four stories and five stories. Well, one of the things that's caused me to do is study something I never thought I would do, and that's architecture. And I studied the problems associated with four or more stories. And some architects say that if you're putting in a four-story, five-story, you need to widen the distance between existing single-story family. So because the shadow effect and so forth. So, and the impact of because at North Fremont, we had the issue of didn't want those neighbors in a third story looking down into the bedroom windows of their neighbors. And I thought that Paul Davis did an excellent job because he designed a project that didn't happen. But not every architect would do that. So let me just say that that is something that I So let me just say that that is something that I I think is important here. I voted for a four-story building it in a previous on, it's part of the of the planning commission. Because that, in my mind, we have to, particularly downtown. I also know that it was proposed for a four-story building on Alvarado, and the designer went two-story. I I couldn't understand that. Uh but so it it was projected but not accomplished. So there's always, as a, they use the phrase, it pencils out. So I don't know if that was the reason or not, but I don't see a place where we could ea- as easily put four-story or five-story as downtown or the adjacent streets, as a lot of, I think, your opportunity sites show. But uh the other issue is, I'd see it mentioned throughout this document, and then in the particularly in the complaints, well, let me say comments. That's the way they phrased it, but a lot of them were complaints. I see traffic mentioned all the time. Well, I don't think you can find a s- a city in California that doesn't have more traffic. Uh and I moved away from Los Angeles a long time ago to get away from traffic. So I think that the po- the city should look at, okay, if we're doing an inventory, how many parking places do we have now, and how much are we losing annually? Because at some point, as pointed out by a former Monterey traffic engineer, it's going to be one of the compelling issues of the city of Monterey, is the loss of parking. And if anyone tries to drive around this this city during car week, I dare you to show me where there's a lot of extra parking places. Because there isn't, and there they don't go away. I mean, they are going away. They, we're we're not keeping them. So we need to look at that, and and with all the emphasis that the state is forcing down our throat of giving up parking places on our streets. We need to continue. I have an A D U in my neighborhood. It went from two cars. When the A D U was built and the house was remodeled, now there's six trucks. And there is no, particularly with alarms going off, is one of the major complaints by a neighbor. That they have these alarms going off in the middle, and he never had it before. Well, first of all, the daughter lived across the street, so that didn't bother him. But these are the issues that we need to look at. Trees. All emphasized, I heard of people complain about it tonight. We need to emphasize in any of these building sites, the bigger trees as we can get there, because the city of Monterey has lost thousands of trees. And we don't have a mechanism in place to replace them in a quantifiable or or easy manner. It's all right now, it's all pie in the sky. So I think that the next week's going to be interesting. So but I once again, I want to thank staff, and I want to thank you, Andrew, for your report. Thank you.
And thank you. Sandy, you want to go next? Sure. You asked about uh three questions. Are the sites and strategies proposed appropriate to include in the draft housing element? Yes. Okay. Are there other sites that should be added? I think Peter's mentioned two. The um is it La Mesa or Del Mesa?
La Mesa.
La Mesa uh is building out a new junior high this uh term. So they plan on being there for a while. Um should the city develop programs to incentivize and facilitate A D U pr- production beyond the annual rate? As possible, yes, of course. Great report, easy to read, followed it completely. I'm going to go back and look at the map again. And I do echo what one of the, I guess her name is Catherine, mentioned. I looked down the list of red um downtown. I thought, why, those sites are occupied. I don't think those are for sale. So there it's great to identify, but it was very easy, very uh well-read, and uh thank you. Eric?
Yes, um so uh overall, uh you've done a great job on the start. Uh it's really, um it's a great framework. I think one of the things that that is being built into it is uh sort of a defensibility as far as getting through this housing element process that's required by the state. So uh somebody tonight described it as a paper exercise, and that's exactly what it is. I mean, hardly any of these things are going to be built now. We don't have the water for them, so it's very much a paper exercise. Fortunately, it's tied into a lot of institutional memory in the staff with sort of a block-by-block and almost parcel-by-parcel understanding of of what the capabilities are in these different parts of the city. So um it is a paper exercise. That's where we are, and it's a sprint till December fifteenth. I'm amazed that an E I R is part of this whole process. I didn't get that before, so that was sort of a shocking revelation to me tonight. And I I always think of E I Rs as these monstrous year-long, years-long uh documents and and uh if you can do it, it seems like you have all your uh traffic engineers already with their uh calculators. But um I I, you know, I'm very encouraged by this, because it is a framework, it is a paper exercise. The state has forced us into this role, and then we have to go through it. That's we got to do it. If we don't, we're we're really going to be penalized. So I we we have no choice about proceeding with this kind of a um of an approach, and I I think what what you brought tonight and what we're going to review next Tuesday is is I think it's right on. You know, I mean, there, we're going to be arguing, I'm sure, about various areas. Somebody also mentioned the idea of of that we need to upzone. But there aren't speci- I mean, there are density numbers that have been mentioned so far, so uh from what I can tell, it mainly is upzoning. Most of the city, the commercial and the multifamily areas are going to be upzoned, which is what we need to do. And it's it's just part of the program. So I'm not sure about the CAS MUNRIS numbers. That's that's an interesting comment. Somebody said that that one was going down. We'll we'll have to understand what that's about. Uh we certainly don't want to um uh we want to try to spread out the um the impacts as as fairly as possible around the town. Uh and regarding your your specific, I think, five questions, I I agree with with Sandy. Uh the only one I want to address is A D Us, because I do a lot of them. And of course, as we said, it's all about the water here. And um I think the number, this eighty-eight number for eight years, of course, could be higher. But the thing about the um the thing about the eighty-eight nu- number is it's com- it's defensible. You know, it's something that we can actually uh document to the state and and like I said, thank God for four-door, because that's sort of our saving uh number. Uh I I still am completely mystified with the whole Ambag process and how we got stuck with this thirty-six fifty-four number. It seems um it 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 seems like there's some unfair thing that went on there, but I think we're going we're choosing a wise path here by working with an excellent company like Andrews and and just plowing ahead. That's all we can do. We can't say, oh, no, we're going to sue the state. The the number is too high. I think I think we are stuck with it. Uh it it'll be interesting to see what other jurisdictions do with their uh quixotic um attempts to slow down this train. So for the A D Us, though, I'm I'm very encouraged that there may be some water available for them uh for three hundred possible units. Uh probably on, won't all go to A D Us, but I I know a number of people in town, and and there's probably hundreds of people in this town who would grab that uh that water for A D Us. It's it doesn't get us very far in the whole number, but it's you know, the A D Us are the lowest hanging fruit because of the the um utility um convenience, as Kim mentioned. So that's all I have to say. A great start and um looking forward to next Tuesday.
I totally agree. Yeah, I mean, out outstanding um package. I think it was really well put together. Like Sandy said, I could read through it and easily intellectualize all the issues that we're trying to wrestle with. And I think um um there were some issues that Peter brought up that made me really think that the real crux of all this is going to be the detail of it. You know, how are we going to fit all these different options into a series of municipal code that we can help facilitate them? And I think finding out how we're going to um write that up in a way that can really make it easier to come up with the numbers you've identified is going to be the the challenge, and I I think it's going to be an enormous amount of work for staff. And I'm just hoping that with extra people, maybe they'll be able to um plow through it. One of your five questions, one of the thoughts that I had was um Heritage Harbor, was it mentioned? Um it's definitely in the um low-lying area. But I know from um experience walking through there with my kids that it's certainly not as uh it's it's doing poorly.
Mm-hmm.
Um it's owned by the aquarium. Um and the parking garage next to it is as well.
Hmm.
I mean, it's a perfect opportunity for um looking at um a small community that could use bicycles and walk to different places. You have those existing structures that might be just reworked into um condos. Um and um given that it's already a um nonprofit-owned, it might be worth looking at the city partnering with the aquarium to address housing for particular needs. So if you have any of these ideas that we've talked about today, it's all housing that's going to be profit or money-driven. Where maybe we can look at Heritage Harbor, potentially other places, where it's a uh nonprofit government housing, where we can help pick, like city staff or um first responders or teachers. You know, we could get them a leg up by putting them into a place that they can walk to their jobs, and they could have um a place to live that's going to be nice and help us recruit new people into the into the city.
That's a great idea.
Um I think you know, we we've talked a lot about water, and I think that's my biggest worry for Ryan Ranch. I mean, do we really have enough water to make a a mini-community there? Because if we're going to go ahead and develop Ryan Ranch or um to a lesser extent, um Garden Road, we're going to need to have not just housing there, but little stores. Um bars, you know, make it a habitable area where people aren't going to be, you know, driving from there back in Monterey. Maybe come here on the weekends, but they'll have places and things they can do on their own. I've liked what they've done in Marina. I mean, some of the high-density housing there in the form of townhouses looked like it could be an ideal fit for um Ryan Ranch. Um and then maybe we could cherry-pick certain things, like the courthouse might be the perfect type of location for um a park lane-type building. So you're looking at flats, you know, in maybe one-bedroom, two-bedroom options. So you could have that embedded in with a larger community, which has got the uh um Del Ma- the La Mesa uh military housing that spreads it out. So it's not just going to be, you know, one or two um um big developments. It's going to be a big development to replace that courthouse with a whole bunch of um more s- spread-out housing around it. Um and you know, maybe things that we know can get done really quickly. You know, what can we cherry-pick that can result in something right away? Um so just a few ideas. Um so given that, any more questions?
I had one more question.
Go for it.
So uh Andrew, the i- in your report somewhere, is there a map of the uh of of assumptions about the uh sea level rise? How how is that addressed?
Yeah, it uh it is shown on, actually, I don't know if we've, we have that map. I don't know if we actually included in the memo. Um it's in the presentation tonight. Um but uh don't think we attach it to the
You know, I can get it from Kim later or something. I'm I'm just, I haven't seen that map. I'm really interested in looking at it.
Yeah, we have, um it's on the that I showed on the screen a map of the all the environmental constraints, and it's on, it's on that, so we can share that.
And maybe at the council meeting, we can take that one map and just focus on it a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
And and maybe for comment, we need to break up the the joint meeting. Instead of holding them all till the very end, let's do it like three times.
Hmm.
Break up this section, this section, and then the final, because trying to get two groups together for comments is going to make it really long, but
Exhausting. It'll make it exhausting.
So just talking about next Tuesday, um I think we're planning to do almost the exact presentation we did here tonight on Tuesday night. It's the focus of the evening session. Um so you're going to be, we wanted to give a primer that the community could come and listen and and the planning commission, and so you could start to ask questions. So don't fall asleep next Tuesday. You guys need to stay awake. We're going to give you some coffee. And then um we'll try to um work on some of these, so we'll be able to answer those questions in the session. And then um after the groups talk about it and discuss, you know, more specifics, then we'll go back to a council meeting. If they can provide direction, they will. I'm I'm, that's optimistic. We also have the following Wednesday council meetings, um a special meeting, if they can't make a decision on Tuesday night.
I appreciated the three people in the audience and a couple of phone conversations because they added a little bit more emphasis to some of the issues we've covered. And I I thought that was nice to have.
Particularly Catherine's. And they stayed.
Hey, we did well. That was two and a half hours. Good job.
So any um staff reports, any other thing, anything else you want to pass on, Kim?
On this item, or do you want to talk about the last agenda item?
Um last agenda item.
Okay, I think um first of all, i- are there any um commissioner comments? And then I have a couple of dates. I don't see any commissioner comments.
We we have more.
Um then I'll go ahead and um just some things on the horizon, and I think some things that have been happening. Um we were really excited. On June sixth, the city council certified the environmental document for the Laguna Grande Park meetings. Uh we've been working through a J P A with um seaside Monterey and the Park District on that. So we've had a lot of community meetings, so that culminates about two years' worth of work. So we're excited about that. Um the A D U ordinance, the second reading was passed, the one that you had just, I think we're on our fifth revision now to comply with state law. I'm surprised to hear, I know our clerk's office has sent it. I've seen copies, so I'm unsure why we're not on their website, so I'll find out.
Drew me off because I just assumed that you had, but um
It makes me a little worried that it didn't go to the I don't know. We'll have to figure it out. Um the big item, um the council solidified their project description for the cannabis ordinance. Um and so we'll be starting an environmental review of that. Basically, they're looking at the draft ordinance that they're looking at is to allow um retail establishments in four districts in Monterey, downtown North Fremont Lighthouse, and then the Cannery Row area, with the exception of not Cannery Row Street itself, and to allow two special events a a year at the fairgrounds. So we'll be starting environmental review for that document um in the near future.
Is Cal Roots, one of those?
Yes.
Is it?
Cali Roots and the Renegades and something festival.
Remember one, I'm not to detract. We had a a site visit with the A R C once, and it was happened, it was the opening day of Cal Roots. And it was like, oh, my God, we we better make this meeting quick, or we're not going to be able to drive back home. It was, I mean, it was quite a um environmental situation there.
It was out on the street this time.
Oh, was it really? That's right. That's your neighborhood. Yeah.
I walked there every afternoon.
I guess it will go up in smoke.
Um and then have some exciting news for you. Um I've shared it with some of you individually. Um you know, during Um, you know, during the COVID situation, we didn't, um, replace our planning manager that left. And so we've been operating at a deficit now for, I don't know, a few years. Um, so I just was able to offer the job to a new planner. He'll be our planning manager. He's starting July third. I'm thrilled. Um, his name's Levi Hill. And, um. I won't be here at the first meeting where he will probably be here in July. So please welcome him and. Um, I'll be back on August fourteenth. So. Look forward to working with you all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you, Kristy, Andrew.
Yes. And you guys thought we've. Any overall comments?
Yeah. First of all, I, I really appreciated that. The first presentation we had today. I thought that the college did a great job of. From what we saw today at that presentation until we saw the results tonight. I thought it was outstanding, uh, what college people can do. And. The, I was impressed by the, the education that they are. Are exhibiting in the presentation of options. It was gratifying to watch and listen. Followed by. Andrew's presentation. I do appreciate. Um, what the staff and consultants do. Uh, for this city, um. Reflecting on what I saw tonight, it was. A lot of the things that. We do on a general basis. Are now falling into these documents. But I think we do less planning for the future than we do handling current issues. Maybe with Ken's new job, that will change. Because. We seem to be falling into, like I said, just handling day to day. And not looking at near term and future. Of where we need to go. Because. Things are coming down at us so fast. From the state and from the pressure of society. That we need to run just to keep up. And I appreciate that's exactly what the staff is doing in so many of these cases. Uh, so. I'm happy camper right now. I think that we're going in the right direction. Thank you.
Here, here.
Anybody else? Okay, that's it.